I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:33. This meeting is being recorded by the City Council on GCTV9. If other persons present are doing the same, you must notify me at this time. And seeing none, we'll move on to roll call of members.
Counselor Golub.
Here.
Counselor Gordon. Counselor Master Tataro.
Here.
Counselor Bullock notified us that she may not be in attendance tonight. If she does join virtually, we will let you know. But she is not here currently. Vice President Gilmore.
Here.
Counselor Perry. Counselor Wandelowski.
Yes.
Counselor Healy.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Garrett.
Here.
Counselor Minhas.
Here.
Counselor Toronto.
Yeah, in presence.
Counselor Bottomley, President Bottomley.
Here.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
And per open meeting law, I'm just announcing Counselor Minhas, Counselor Healy, Counselor Gilmore are attending virtually online. And next, we move to the Pledge of Allegiance, which is voluntary.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I need a second on that.
Second.
And seeing none, a roll call vote.
Counselor Golub.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro.
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Wandelowski.
Yes.
Counselor Healy.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Minhas.
Yes.
Counselor Toronto.
Yep.
And would the President like to vote?
Yes and yes.
The minutes pass.
We will next move on to communications from the Superintendent and the School Committee. Great, thank you, welcome.
Good evening. Just a couple of topics this evening. An update on a capital project that has been ongoing for a little bit over a year and a half is our Federal Street Elementary School North Elevator. The bid was opened up on December 4th. The bid submission, only one was received by United Elevator. The scope of the work came in at approximately a little over 222,000, which was a little over 40,000 more than what we have in a capital funding available. So on last Wednesday's School Committee, they voted to approve the use of school choice funds so that this project can be on its way and the elevator can be up and operational at Federal Street's North Tower. The city's been notified of the vote and they're sending out the award letter to the United Elevator Company to get the contract in place and we hope to have this project done ASAP. The other invitation that's on here is, we've been doing this, I think for the past three years, but wanted to officially invite all City Council members to do a tour of our city school buildings. January 31st is a Friday. It's a professional development day, Teacher In-service Day, so students won't be in the buildings. But I'd love to have any of you who wish to join and tour the facilities with us. We will meet at the schools according to the schedule that's on the agenda. So if you can't do all of them and you're just interested in a particular school and just want to come for one or as many as you want, I'll be at each of those schools at that time and we'll wait for a few minutes to see who shows up and we'll give you a tour of the buildings. I think it's important for you to see the inside of the schools and you're often not in them unless you have students in our district, so I hope you get a chance to join us. And that's all I had for you tonight. I don't know, Glenn, if you're online and you'd like to add anything.
I'm here, nothing to add, happy to answer questions.
So I guess we'll open this up. Any questions? Yes, Counselor.
Can you just say again what time the schools tour is on the 31st? Sure. We're going to start at the Four Corners School at 8:00. We're going to go to the High School at 8:30. Then we'll go down to the Middle School at 9:00, Federal Street at 9:30, Newton at 10:00, and then do the preschool at 10:30. So we'll do the loop.
It's also, the schedule's also on the agenda.
It's okay.
Counselor Toronto.
I'm curious, the, the capital thing that came last year was, like you said, the elevator, I guess whereabouts is that? That sounded like it was a larger request than the original part was. I know that we were very happy last year at Capital Committee that we weren't going to have to replace like a couple of elevators at Federal Street. But, so it was a much scaled down request and then where the money process is going in from there, I guess.
I think maybe it was a little over two years ago. Eric Heavey, I think, was our Facilities Director at the time. And I think the original thought was that the whole internal shaft had to be replaced. And I think it came, I think it was like a million dollar expectation. And then after, I think it was actually United Elevator that was on site with Eric Heavey and did some more research into the inner workings of it. And then last year, when it totally went out of commission, they did confirm that the whole internal piece did not have to be fixed. So the bid that went out is a lot less than the million dollars, thankfully. And we are hoping to have that up and operational, obviously, for compliance issues for ADA.
Any last calls? Yes. Counselor Wandelowski.
I just have a comment for Glenn. I know maybe two meetings ago, we talked about that in the past, there were opportunities for our Ways and Means to work with, to talk to School Committee as you were working on the budget. And so I just wanted to earmark that again, that maybe we can make that happen so that we get ahead of things instead of questioning things much later in the process.
Absolutely. I think if the Chair of Ways and Means wants to connect with Kate Martini, who's chairing our Budget Committee and has been doing a great job soliciting feedback from the public in the early stages of the budget development process, I think she'd be very open to that and we'd be happy to work with you. Thanks for bringing that up again.
Any other questions? Looks like that's it. Thank you.
I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday season as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
President, if I could. So the other part that I see with the schedule, and I've tried to attend some of these in the past, and I know that some other councilors have as well, and they're good. Like, I mean, I want the open, right, communication for the walkthroughs and stuff. I think that they're probably not a hard and fast timeline, right? Like, from going from one school to the other within 30 minutes. So I presume like if councilors or other folks were to attend a start at 8:00 AM at the Discovery School at Four Corners, in order to get over to all of the six schools by 10:30, it, I don't know if that timeline would be realistic, right? Like, if you're going to tour the Discovery School and then zip over to the, you know, within 30 minutes, I guess I don't know what you would be learning at that point. Is there leeway in the timeline for that with folks who are going to be touring, with folks on this January 31st date to expand across past 10:30, I guess is what.
Absolutely. I'm working all day. We can spend as much time as you'd like. I just wanted people to have a touch point if they didn't want to go to all six of them. So just know if you didn't want to go to the start and you're waiting at the Middle School, we'll be there.
All right. All right, cool. Great, thank you. We will move on to communications from the Mayor.
Good evening, everybody. Just here tonight, I'm pleased to welcome our new Finance Director, Stephen Nummerkow, who's here with me today. He comes to this position with great experience serving in financial leadership in municipal government for over 25 years. This includes Chief Finance Officer for Greenfield Public Schools. Stephen possesses a versatile skill set, great familiarity with the region, and detailed driven mindset that will be fantastic for our community. Additionally, I wanted to share a quick update on the Treasure Collector position. We've welcomed a new Treasurer, Mandy Whitten. She's been there some days already, but will be starting full-time on Monday. And Stephen Price is helping to acclimate our new Treasure Collector as a training consultant. He's done, has years of experience as a Treasure Collector in Natick and Framingham. And on the good news front, our tax rate is down 83 cents, 1956. That's down from 2039 right now, so that's a decrease of 4.2%. And that actually marks the lowest tax rate in the city since fiscal year 12. Our Chief Assessor, Randy Austin, suggested that the new tax rate will lower the average family tax bill by $30 compared to last year. Very proud of, well, it's very good that it's not going up because that's what generally happens. And no promises for what that will be next year. I'm very proud of the work our Assessors Department did and the whole Board of Assessors. They were real heroes, working diligently to get all of this done and helping us through this year. An update on the elderly taxation fund I've been asked about. We're working to get this established. The committee's going to include Counselor Minhas, our Treasure Collector, Jim Geismann from the Board of Assessors, and Citizen Appointments, one of whom you'll hopefully be approving tonight, Patty. And next year, next month is David Ralston, I believe, will be appointed for January. So we'll have a full board then and they can get, be able to get started. I think that you may have received the charter changes. I don't know if those went to full City Council, but they were approved. These are the ones, not the ones that we, you just passed this year, but ones that the City Council before you sent into the state. It actually takes about a year and a half. One of the highlights in that is there will be three people on the Board of Assessors, so there'll be one more elected position to the Board of Assessors. There are several other changes in that and I'm sure we'll be forwarding that information to you. And we've had a lot of fun with the holidays this year. The tree lighting was on December 6th. Twice As Smart came and sang. Central Maintenance did a wonderful job setting up the festive tree. DPW was stellar, putting up the Christmas lights. Took them several weeks to get that done. The Greenfield Business Association also was a huge contributor to that. I had a blast volunteering at that amazing race, the Jingle Fest, and I judged easily all of the gingerbread house contests. That was actually very fun and I would encourage anybody to do that next year. It is adorable and they do need people and if, many of the spots we had volunteered would be inside. So additionally, we'll have, Menora will be returning to the Common later this month. Jasper Lapienski organizing that Menora lighting, which will occur Monday, December 30th at 5:30. And wishing everybody a happy and safe holiday season. A little addendum, we've had City Hall plumbing issues and operational issues there at City Hall. As you've probably heard by now, City Hall is undergoing significant plumbing issues that require extensive work. We're planning to close City Hall either on Friday, January 3rd, or Friday, January 10th. That's the house trap that's sort of collapsed. And if it's just that, it will be three days. If it's the pipe that goes out to the sewer, it's going to be a much more significant change. And we'll have to have a new plan because that would be like probably a week or 10 days. And that pipe goes under the condensers, I think. So that would affect the heat. So we're all planning for what we would do next. But I actually just wanted to alert you to the fact that this is, it's a big problem. We've had a problem in January with the heating. We've had a problem with sewer backup a couple of times. We've had to move people urgently upstairs, had the fire department in to check it out and, you know, people from DPW, Central Maintenance, et cetera. And last week, we were making an emergency plan for what we would do. So I think that in general bears watching, bears maybe putting a committee together to look at what we're going to do next. So I am concerned about the City Hall's future viability because there's so many issues that are actually with that building. And last week, we were kind of up against it. Hopefully, the, that the pipe that goes out is not as severely damaged and is at the right angle and everything, but I don't really know that. So that's it for updates. I don't know if you wanted to say anything, Stephen?
It's nice to be here and it's nice to be back in Greenfield. You know, we're working hard over at City Hall, trying to, as you know, there's probably, there's a lot of turnover in some positions. So we're moving forward. We're able to get a payroll person, KP person, as well as the all-important Treasure Collector piece in there within the past three weeks or so. So we're extremely happy about that. And, you know, we're getting tax bills out right now. So it's business as usual. However, there's a large learning curve with everyone trying to take on new roles, new responsibilities, but it is really a great crew there. I'm extremely happy to be back in Greenfield and I look forward to the next couple months developing the budget with you folks and taking advantage of some of the opportunities here to do some interesting things with the budget and move the city forward. So thanks for having me back.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Open up for questions. Counselor Master Tataro.
I knew your father and he was a great guy and my condolences, by the way. And I'm assuming the apple doesn't fall far from the tree, so welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for that, yeah. He sadly missed already.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions that, but there's been a lot, there's a lot going on with ordinance changes and I was just wondering if we could get your take on anything regarding, or how you feel about the potential marijuana shop that's going to be on Main Street, that they're proposing to be on Main Street? What's your feeling about two pot shops within spitting distance of a preschool and particularly one on Main Street? That's a concern of mine and I was just wondering how you felt about that.
So I was on Planning Board for a long time and we would have people that came in all the time and say, "How come we're having so many nail salons?" The fact of the matter is, we as the, we as Planning Board members, as City Councilors, as Mayor, we're not in charge of what businesses come to the city. Something is either zoned for this or it's not. There is, I have not followed that whole story with the cannabis, I mean, I read that in the newspaper as well. We did, it's zoned for how many feet it's supposed to be from a school. So it is not how many of those that I wanted. The Planning Board, Zoning Board, whoever's voting on that is going to vote what is allowed to be in the, in how many feet from whatever it is. We could have five of them that were there or 10 could be on Main Street if that's what the market dictated. We are not in control of if there were 12 pharmacies on Main Street. So that's, people have to follow the zoning regulations and you actually need to approve what is in, what comes before you unless there's a reason that it's not zoned for
One other thing is that 176 Main, they're proposing the apartments, and right now there's, again, we have to vote on it, change the ordinance to allow first-floor residents on Main Street. But it seems to me, the way this is proposed, there's a laundromat and mailboxes that are going to be for the tenants on the first floor, as well as the lounge. To me, that's not a commercial business. That's for the tenants of the building. I just have an issue with this steamrolling and losing storefronts. As much as we have many empty storefronts, I think that we need to move forward and do everything we can as a city to fill those storefronts. But if we lose them, we'll never get them back. So I have a real concern about that. I just, I don't know what your feelings are about that, but again, yeah, by right is one thing and right is another. I just don't want to see things perpetuate and we lose Main Street. Anyway.
So I don't know all the particulars of that one. I know that we are way behind on housing and we can't build it fast enough. I think the, there are so many housing units that are needed. I'm happy that we have ones that are going to be coming in the former Wilsons and that project will bring many housing units. There's some on Silver Street. I'm happy for everyone that there is. The one that's up, almost all of the proposals that come forward, I think it's a good thing. We need more places to put people if we want more people to move here. So that's my feeling on that. But I don't know about any of the particulars of that particular one. I think I did hear something about that and there's a zoning change that's coming up, something that's before you, which will be for you to vote on and decide. So.
Do we have any other questions for the Mayor? Seeing none, I.
I actually brought with me Director Warner and the Fire Chief were going to come talk about the rotary because that was a question that Counselor Garrett brought and I thought that they might be a little better explaining about the traffic and why they felt, how they felt about the rotary.
Welcome. Thank you for having us. As you all know, you received an email through MassDOT suggesting a potential roundabout at Main, Federal, and Bank Row. To give a little backstory on the Main Street project, it goes back three and a half years now when we started this project. It's part of what they call the TIP program through the TPO, Transportation Improvement Plan, through the Transportation Planning Organization. Our history through this program is you pay all the engineering and design for a project and the overall project is funded by MassDOT and Federal Highway Administration. Example, Wisdom Way and the Nash's Mill Bridge replacement. So we've been very successful in this program. So three years ago, we started out with engineering and design for 350,000 for the first phase, the 25% design, and that's where we're at now. 25% design went into MassDOT, it's in the comment period. So comments are made and then they had suggested a roundabout at this intersection. They're not saying we have to have it, they provided data. We had to go through a road safety audit during the process with our consultant firm, Fussin' O'Neill, for this project. I will say, when we went through that project, the stakeholders were public safety, Chief Strahan, representatives from the Police Department, DPW, our Engineering Department, former Mayor and the current Mayor now is part of the stakeholder. So we went through this road safety audit that we had to pay an extra $50,000 for and what it did was it collected crash data from, for so many years back of every intersection that intersects Main Street. So they could do the data and try and decide how we want to change Main Street with the original scope or plan to make it more pedestrian and cycle bicyclists, safer, I guess, for the downtown. So as they went through that study and they concluded that study and gathered all the data, believe it or not, Main and Federal was the safest intersection we have on Main Street when it comes to crash data. The few accidents that has happened there is actually, were actually cyclists induced, not vehicle induced. So that's some interesting data. We live our lives by data in my world these days, but not all data is, fits every location when it comes to these roundabouts. From a personal standpoint, I love roundabouts. The one at the college is perfect. It's the perfect place to have one. There's been some concerns, there's pros and cons on the current suggestion of a roundabout at that intersection. So when you have a roundabout, they set the crosswalks further back. Picture every crosswalk, 100 feet back on Federal Street, 100 feet on both sides of Main Street, and then down Bank Row. And what comes with that for today's standards, you have to have raised curbing, granite curbing bailout areas in the middle of the road. So if pedestrians cross and they don't get stuck in traffic flying into the roundabout, they have a safe zone. So that raised concerns when I had attended a meeting about a month ago, thinking of public safety, especially Chief Strand and his fire trucks having to get to High Street or to the east part of town in a hurry. With all these raised granite islands and curbings, where do the cars bail out and how does he get through this roundabout in a swift manner? I think that's an issue personally because we're narrowing our areas going into a roundabout. The way it's set up now, if we keep it signalized, there's cars can bail all over to the curb and the chief has all kinds of room to run his fire apparatus through when they when they pull over ahead of it. The other piece of a roundabout is it's all about speeding up traffic. So, it's, it's a little, to me, it, it's a little redundant if you, we're trying to speed up traffic, but we're trying to make it more pedestrian-friendly, or running bike lanes through a roundabout. So, it, it's bothersome to me personally. Like I said, we live, we live through data, but data doesn't always fit the bill. Cookie cutter, so to speak. So, that's kind of the background on this. It, it's going through, we just have to answer MassDOT. It, it's technically our decision, the city's decision, whether we wanna do it or not. They're waiting for a response. And then they can finish up their comment period with our responses, consultant firm responses, and then we move on to the second phase that we had appropriated. I, I think the other important piece here is, it's going to increase what the city needs to earmark towards the engineering and design. It could potentially raise the, the engineering design up to 10, 10%, which could be a significant amount of money. And the other piece is, when the engineering design goes up, the project costs have gone, gone up. In three years, this project, after two public meetings with Fussin' O'Neill, our consultant firm, and having the public actually in this room, and taking all the comments and suggestions, the, the project has gone from 5.0 mil, 5.08 million to over 13 million as we speak. So, the engineering design, we pay a certain percentage towards a project cost. If we increase it $2 million for a roundabout, our engineering design, our portion is gonna increase significantly. So, I wanted to point that out. So, that's, that's kinda like a precursor. It's, it's the funding piece. The other thing is, is the, the safety data, and what the initial scope and, and objective of Main Street project was all about wasn't about speeding up pedestrian, speeding up vehicle traffic at, at Main and Federal and Bank Row. The whole intent was to add bike lanes and, and have safer passage for pedestrians and cyclists. So, if Chief Strahan wants to speak to the project, right ahead?
Good evening, councilors. Happy holiday season to everybody. It's nice to see you all. I just wanted to follow up a little bit with Director Warner said about the roundabout. The rest of the project on Main Street is, you know, very needed and long overdue. There's some critical intersections outside of the Main and Federal Street. A lot of them are T-intersections, which mean Main Street goes one way and a street comes into it. That needs some attention, and that's where we see some of the crash data and the, and the injuries for vehicles that are involved in a crash or pedestrian accident. The Main and Federal one, when it was first approached to me about a roundabout, my, my initial reaction was, this is great. Like, roundabouts are great. They, they serve a purpose. Until I started talking with Director Warner, and the limit is, there's not a lot of room on Main and Federal Street to put in a large roundabout, you know. GCC works great. We can go up over the curb if we have to. The problem, or the big difference between GCC and downtown that I see is just the traffic volume. We don't see the large trucks as much going around that roundabout, like tractor trailers that we would see often going up and down Main Street. But more importantly, my fire apparatus accessed that intersection multiple times a day, and I am concerned that if somebody pulls over to the right, which is required by law to do in the middle of that roundabout, if I'm gonna have enough room to get my larger pieces of equipment around that roundabout quickly, ease, and, and easily and safely. I also looked at the pedestrian component of it, and I still can't get my, my hands around where the pedestrians would cross safely. Right now, it's at a, it's at a light, and they're guided to cross the street when the traffic signal turns. I don't know how you interrupt traffic in a roundabout safely to have pedestrians crossing. I haven't really seen that in the report, and would like to see that. But overall, I think the project's good to move forward. I do have concerns with the component of the roundabout, and I wanted just to share that with everybody tonight. So, thank you for having me, and happy to answer any questions.
Great. We'll open up two questions. Counselor Toronto?
I understand the apprehensions with, with the roundabout in that area. I also, I recognize space issues and stuff. We already have those in the city as it is. We have a, sorry, guys, you guys are back there. We have a, also, unenforced parking problems. I will call out Chapman Street, any given day of the week. That, that street is a, pardon my French, a shitshow, and very narrow, and parking on both sides is already a problem, which should be addressed. But the problem I'm talking about is closer to Main Street. There are loading zones, there are no parking zones that are completely unenforced, seven days a week. And I will guarantee you, Sunday, pats are playing, people in the Vic, all of that corner, if you try to turn any kind of trailer, Mack truck, anything down Chapman Street, that's a nightmare, because all of those are unenforced. We have very unenforced mandates in our situations with parking in our downtown district as it is. Nobody gets towed, nobody gets ticketed, bottom line. And people can give me any guff they want about it, but I've lived here a long time. Doesn't get enforced at all. When it comes to operations of that, with, with something turning into a downtown roundabout, it would be great. As you say, the, the roundabouts do help with certain circumstances, and they also can deter from other things. I don't think that what we have downtown right now for pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic, car traffic is ideal at all. It's, it may be deemed safer on one level right now because the lights do stop you from doing it. There are plenty of people who make, all of the, all of the ones at the downtown, the Federal and Main, no turn on red, right? Every day. I just saw it today again, while I'm at the light, people turn right on red, all the time. And you're not supposed to. They got signs saying, "No turn on red." You can try to enforce traffic as much as you want, right? And it's not gonna happen. So, to me, those kind of like back-and-forth arguments about what's gonna be most safe for folks and what's not going to be, I don't know. It becomes a hard, it becomes a hard logistics of, and again, I don't wanna envy any of you who have to really get into the meat and potatoes of this at all. I just wanna point out, like, as much as we would like to make everything as safe as possible for every constant circumstance that's going forward, i- it is not gonna be that way. It's just not realistically. And all that to say, just because the way that the, the, the city was set up when it was built 250 years ago, and we're trying to modernize it, doesn't mean we can't find ways to modernize it. And we have with, with the traffic studies, with parking studies, with all of these things. I don't wanna discourage this idea and, and throw it out, because it might make some other aspects a little bit more difficult to deal with. If we have to move pedestrian traffic back 50 feet, 100 feet, and people crossing in front of Greenfield's Market all the time, there's no crosswalk there. But they're gonna do it because it's easier. They don't wanna walk 50 feet down the road and across the way. It's like, it's the same reason why people in Greenfield say, "We have no parking in Greenfield." We have a crap load of parking in Greenfield, but nobody wants to walk 50 feet to get to where they wanna go. They wanna park right in front of where they wanna go and get out for their convenience. It's not a level of convenience, it's a level of safety for the public, it's a level of safety for the operation of the city. And I think people need to, you know, maybe dial it back a little bit and say, "Hey, maybe I gotta walk another 50 feet." It's not, you know, it's not a matter of like 80 or handicap. It's a matter, sometimes it's a matter of convenience that I think a lot of, a lot of bickering gets out there for. So, I would, I would like to see this taken as an approach, a realistic approach to, to what is functional for, for folks living and working downtown, and then for our emergency services, of course, and, and then maybe there's a, there's like a middle ground in there.
Counselor Gordon?
Thanks. Thank you both for, for being here and talking this through. I have to admit that when I got the, I saw the email from DOT, I was thinking, you know, okay, great. I also love a roundabout. They can be quite pleasant. They can be quite useful. But it's not clear to me what problem this particular roundabout proposal was trying to solve for. And it sounds like there are lots of reasons for us not to do it, which make total sense to me, the cost certainly being high up there. I mean, if it was gonna make us like a lot safer, a lot more efficient, you know, whatever, I think that would be one thing. It would be, you know, worth considering. But it sounds like, from what you're saying, there's really not a, a big improvement that we would see if we went to the, the effort and the cost of, of doing this. Am I hearing you correctly?
Yes, that's somewhat what I'm saying. The increase in cost, and when we talk about safety, I, I guess we're not gaining a whole lot from what the road safety audits are already telling us in the pros and cons from our consultant firm to keep it signalized. So, yes.
Okay. Is it, I mean, do you have a sense of, other than like in general, roundabouts can be helpful, and, you know, all the good things they pointed out, like, do you have a sense of why they are making that recommendation, particularly here, or is it just sort of a general, roundabouts can be great?
The, the main thing that was pointed out, and their suggestion of adding a micro roundabout there, and I say "micro" because it's not your average roundabout. It's smaller, it's tighter, it's compacted. And again, it's gonna make difficulty for traffic to get out of the way with raised islands for the, for the crosswalks that are gonna be set back. So, it's gonna narrow Main Street, Federal Street, and Bank Row significantly to add those safe pedestrian bailout areas in the middle because of traffic coming off the, the roundabout. So, again, there's pros and cons for both. I follow the, the idea that the, the road safety audit and, and the true crash data we've had. Do we wanna invest, bump this project up another million dollars and potentially $300,000 in engineering design that comes out of our coffers? So, the main thing that came out of the, the mock-up engineering design was, it's gonna speed up vehicle traffic. And again, I, I go back to the, the spirit of the original project of putting bike lanes on Greenfield and, and make it safe for pedestrians, so on and so forth, to Counselor Toronto's point. It doesn't seem right we're speeding up traffic, but we're putting cyclists through a roundabout. It just has a bad feel to me personally, by reading all the data.
Counselor Healy?
Thank you. Can you hear me all right? I'll take that as a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Having worked for MassDOT, I, I do know that they, the past 10, 15 years, they've really been pushing the roundabout theory, and I think it does work in most situations. You go down to Northampton by the bowling alley, it's great, right? It works well there. The one by GCC works well. The problem with Main Street is, and Counselor Toronto brought up a great point, pedestrians will cross kinda where they wanna cross. If you put a roundabout there, they're gonna cross close to the intersection. It's, it's actually probably gonna make it more dangerous, 'cause they're not gonna walk 100 feet to go away from the roundabout. Secondly, I'd like to say that vehicle traffic and, and emergency vehicle traffic, it's, it's definitely gonna slow them down going through that intersection. You, you could just look at the Deerfield project on Route 5 and 10, where they put granite curbs in the center of 5 and 10, and they were ripping them out a year later for the fire department, right? So, a lot of things, I think it's a great concept, just not a great location. My suggestion, Marlo, and maybe this was covered under the traffic study, I didn't look, but did they do any intensive like traffic signal timing studies to look at how we can improve the traffic signals? I honestly don't think the traffic is that bad going through that intersection. Maybe around 2 o'clock, it gets a little congested. But did they take any data on how we can improve the traffic lights, would be the question?
I don't, I can look through all the reports. I don't think actual data on the timing of the lights. I know when we swapped those lights out about 12 years ago, we had to keep adjusting the timing for like a couple of years to hit everything properly, not backed up on Bank Row, Federal Street, so on and so forth. Part of this project is gonna be upgrading the, the signals, which I have to assume with today's technology, there's gonna be better ways of timing that out. But to my knowledge, there was, there was no timing. They just took the overall timing in the current study of what the lights are now, as opposed to what they predict it'll be with a roundabout.
Yeah. So, that would be my, my personal preference would say, you know, move forward with like a timing study in, in the next engineering step, and with the newer technology, they could say, okay, between 2 and 3, we're getting more peak flow coming down Federal Street towards Main Street. We can increase the timing by five seconds on these lights, and kinda work through it that way with traffic engineering. I just, I really, I, I oppose a roundabout in this location. I think it's a terrible idea. Thanks.
Counselor?
Thank you guys for coming and speaking to us about this. I don't wanna keep going around in circles around this, but I, in a roundabout way, I'll get to my question. I had to. I, I was the one that asked the question about this, and so, again, I really do appreciate you guys showing up and kinda giving us your perspective. The piece of data, you know, that, on this, I'm looking at the MassDOT sheet, and not all of it is explained, but there's a little number in the bottom right-hand corner about predictive fatal injuries and crashes. In the roundabout version of it, they think it's half. It's 0.52 versus 0.26, and I don't know what that means. If you can explain that. And I also have a second question about those granite curb islands in the center of the road. Am I right in understanding that those would need to be there in a signalized intersection or a rotary? It doesn't matter what happens as far as this intersection, or is it just if there's a rotary, there'd be granite curbing in the middle of the street?
The, the granite curbing for this project, if it was a roundabout installed, would have to go there, under, under standards.
But without a roundabout, it wouldn't?
No, it does not, because the original thoughts and design on the whole length of Main, Main Street was to put a granite island all the way down the middle. And, and as I said, the stakeholder is working with the consultant firm. It's a bad idea to get fire apparatus down the middle of Main Street when you have eight-inch raised granite curbens. So, it's gonna be kinda like you see on an on-off ramp on 91, raised like two inches when you're coming off, you know, going on the highway from an on-ramp, so that fire apparatus or PD can get down the middle of the road as cars pull over on that piece. And, and as far as the data, I, I think it said rhetorical. I don't have that report in front of me. So, it's, it's, it's like an estimated data from all the data they've gathered from roundabouts, so on and so forth. So, I'm not sure how that lines up with the actual road safety audit we did of actual crash data from our PD that was part of that RSA, and how they can say, you know, in the next 20 years, the death rate's gonna be higher if we keep it signalized. I'm not sure how they come up with that, or can, can guess at that. Hopefully, no one, but...
I have one follow-up question, too. If we stick with a signalized intersection, you know, as you mentioned, one of the main goals of this project is to increase pedestrian and bicycle access to Main Street. If we stick with signals, is there any intention, or is the state gonna look at how to make it so it's safer for a bicycle or to travel through that? You know, I imagine, you know, I love taking my bike around town, and I imagine going through a rotary to be a terrifying prospect, but I also know for many people, including, you know, my wife... know, my wife, it's not fun to go on Main Street at all, especially that intersection. You have to get in between cars, you know? I know that that's probably, you know, would require more, um, study and money, it sounds like, for the engineering, but, you know, some sort of signal for bicycles in particular. I know that's not a thing that exists in Franklin County or anywhere else in Western Mass or anywhere in this country really, frankly. But if we're gonna actually do this, you know, a rotary maybe is a bridge too far or maybe it doesn't make sense for some other reasons. But focusing on safety should be our priority, and I know it is for you folks. So that's something, if it's possible to look at, even if it's not that specific intervention, anything to make it so a bicycle can travel through more safely would be spectacular. Um, I would love a little, you know, bicycle stoplight, but again, I don't think I'll get my wish. But if it's, if we can ask the, you know, the Mass DOT fairy for it, maybe they'll pay, you know?
Yeah, I, I can bring that up to the, our consultant firm. The other piece of it is, uh, remains signalized, um, a cyclist follows the rules as a motorist.
And it's terrifying. When you mix, when you mix pedestrian, uh, bicycles and automobiles, that's not a...
Well, that, that's the other thing that's been in the back of my mind. It would be terrifying to be on a bicycle, try and get around this roundabout at noontime traffic at Main and Federal. I mean, I've lived here all my life and I pretty much know the crazy times and wanted to stay away from that intersection, but, um, again, cyclists entering a roundabout when somebody's looking to the left, looking to the left to beat that car onto the rotary, I, don't say rotary, it's a roundabout, um, they're not looking to the right. They hammer the throttle and they just hit a cyclist entering that roundabout in their painted lane. So, uh, all these things I've, I've thought through and thought through, you know, what, what's gonna be the safest, best, most economical solution for the city, I guess. You're welcome.
Counselor Wandelowski, then Counselor Master Tataro.
Just a quick comment. There are roundabouts that have been designed for cyclists. I rode my bike on ones, um, in other states. So, yes, if it's your bike going in the roundabout with the cars, that is terrifying and I would not do it. Um, but there are other designs and I think where you get fatalities, um, when there's lights is because people are speeding up to get through the yellow and then they plow through a pedestrian. So that's, that's why roundabouts can be safer because it keeps people going at a constant speed instead of speeding up to get through and make that left turn.
Yeah, I agree 100%. But what we're dealing with, the Main and Federal and Bank Row is only so much room. You really can't have a separate, um, raised bike lane, so to speak, or something that affect, like the rest of Main Street's gonna be a raised bike lane. It's in the, in the design anyway. So, um, we're, we're trying to put a roundabout into a very, I know it looks like a big intersection, but it's a very tight area and they're calling it a micro roundabout. So, I can assure you by looking at what I've been looking at, the cyclists are gonna be mingling with the motorists. The other thing that came out of the study was an issue of line of sight coming up Bank Row, it's really steep, and then hitting that roundabout. That, that came up in the study too as a concern. So, thank you.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yeah, I, I think I remember seeing that there was a second one proposed as well at, at High and, uh, Main?
Yes, the, the original, we had three original designs, uh, draft designs. That's kinda been, the, the one at High and, and Main has been kinda pulled off because we have historic property on, on two corners of that, and that turns into a, a very long drawn-out process that, um, Federal Highway Administration and Mass DOT doesn't wanna touch because it's historic property, whether you take a foot of it, two feet of it or whatever. So, the last proposal I saw, and it, and like I said, this is in discussion with the Mass DOT, is potentially straightening that intersection out to code, you know, a four-way rather than like a TY intersection. It's a funky intersection up there, um, and having more, more of a four-way stop. And then the other, the other proposed thing that I'm kind of on board with, or I am on board with, is a, a signal added to Conway and Main. Conway was the worst intersection, to Counselor Toranzo's point. Uh, the crash data is like accidents all the time. I mean, we've all tried to go left on a Main Street on Conway and it, it takes a long time. So, um, and it's a narrow spot there. Um, we, we, uh, the chief and I talked early on on that. So that's important that he can hit his little button coming out of the fire station and get traffic out of the way if there's a signal there. So...
I, uh, I, I only ask 'cause if there were to, if I were to choose between one or the other, I would think the one up, historic property aside, um, Main, High and Congress would be an ideal location for a roundabout. But, and, and they're beveled, those curbs, uh, within this, around the perimeter of the circle, right?
Yes, on the inside, yes.
So trucks can, can get over them. But it's not gonna happen, so...
I, I mean, it's still being looked at and if you take a look at that three-way intersection, you've got all kinds of personal driveways coming at every different angle around that corner too that, that has an effect on personal property, uh, like gets redesigned, so on and so forth. So, like wisdom way, we had to do, you know, we had to go through the, um, uh, the real estate thing and pay off pieces of the property that, that we impinged on to replace the wall and whatnot. It, that would, that would come into play on something like this.
One, one more question. It's a different topic. It's about the house trap. Can't that be eliminated at City Hall altogether? I mean, now fixtures all have their own traps.
Yes, that, that's the intent. Our record showed, uh, at the DPW that back in 83, that trap had a problem. Um, the, the issue with the trap at City Hall is it's very deep. Usually it's at the surface of the cement in your basement. This one's four to five feet down, so they gotta dig down to it to remove it. And then we'll put in what we call a standard cleanout so we can get equipment in there to clear the line to the outside. So yes, that, that is the, uh, as the mayor had talked about, that's the initial piece of closing that particular Friday. Um, 'cause they gotta open up a fairly big hole in the basement to get down to that to remove it from the main piping.
I, I only know this 'cause I recently got rid of my 124-year-old house, uh, a house trap that was causing, uh, significant issues. Um, 'cause they're not needed anymore, but that's back before, I guess, fixtures had their own traps, so...
Yep. That, that's correct. And most cast iron traps in, in all households, just, uh, beware that they rot out on the bottom and they start bringing in mud and gravel and you have sewer backups in your house. You're plugging your outside line. So, they're lo, no longer needed. Every fixture in the home has a trap on it now to prevent sewer gas from coming in the home. Yep. You're welcome.
Um, I've got Counselor Toranzo and Garrett, but I wanna ask if there are any counselors that haven't spoken to this issue, if they wanna speak first. Uh, I guess not. We'll go to Counselor Toranzo and then Garrett.
This may not have to do exactly what we're talking about, but since I've got yeheer, um, and it does have to do with traffic. Uh, I know that a thing that has come up in the last couple of years, I think I've mentioned it briefly before, is the, um, Federal Street, Pierce Street intersection. And it seems that, maybe I'm totally wrong, but sometimes things just make sense when they make sense. Uh, when that was redone, that intersection was repaved and whatnot. It, it appears that, that, that is one of the only weighted intersections left in town, not by camera. Is that correct? And it would appear that after the last, uh, renovation to that area, it really screwed up the, the timing, uh, the weight. There, there's a left turn signal every light cycle on Federal Street. It's obnoxious. It's obnoxious to myself, it's obnoxious to people who have told me about the, can you do something about this? And I was like, I'm just a city counselor, I can't do it. But I can only express my concern. It's obnoxious. Like, there, I imagine the box in the corner that controls the electricals can somehow be adjusted to the weight and measure of, of that intersection that every cycle doesn't have to have a left turn arrow sitting there for 45 seconds when no one's in either left turn lane. I'm only saying this because we're talking about intersections.
I, I do have an answer. That particular intersection i, is the older system.
Yeah.
Uh, when that intersection was redone, uh, I believe at some point, uh, it's the old style. You have traffic loops under the pavement and when that pavement was milled, we didn't have evidence that the loops got damaged, but we believe they got damaged. So that intersection had to be set to auto. There's no adjustment because the loops are not working properly. If the loops were working properly, you wouldn't get that obnoxious left arrow every time if nobody was parked there, right, or in line. So, um, I, I know the central maintenance director, uh, Joe Pugs, is, is, is aware of it. You know, and at some point, we have four or five intersections and, and he can speak to that, um, that are gonna need some upgrading, uh, as far as the signals and, and, and the hardware.
But is that, I mean, we just had it re, that intersection redone, so is there no like kind of warranty on what was redone there? 'Cause it seemed like what, it was fine before it was remilled or repaved or whatever was done at that intersection to make it, uh, nicer on the surface, but it, it created a bigger problem with traffic. Is that not covered under something like a warranty that i, i, if, if, if what they put on, let's just say, for instance, it's a weighted system, right? Like, if no one's sitting there on top of it and like motorcycle might not be able to, to weigh it, um, but a car would. Uh, but if, what, what was done with the, the milling and repaving of it added more weight to it that is causing a false signal to the system, do we not have any kind of recourse, uh, to, to go back on that to be like, hey, you gotta fix what you did because now you, you've screwed up our entire light system?
Um, well, we've, we've gone way beyond the statute where the intersection was done to hold the contractor liable.
So with the president's allowance, this agenda item is not listed on the agenda for discussion. Open meeting law would suggest that it put, be put on a future agenda for future discussion. Would that be appropriate?
Okay. I just don't wanna get too far off, off the track 'cause we can just discuss this at another meeting. 'Cause we're already in our, our 10-minute segment, which has gone quite a ways, if that's okay.
Sure.
Counselor Garrett?
I'm happy to hold on. It's a general question, it doesn't about the interior design, but we're trying to move on, we can move on.
Excellent. Do we have any other questions? I think that's it.
All right. Uh, thank you for having me and, uh, happy holidays.
Let's see, moving on, we don't have any more questions for other city employees, so we'll move on to public comment. Please state your name and address and we'll use our standard three minutes. Jasper Lapinski.
So this is my first public comment before the Greenfield City Council. And yeah, so my name is Jasper Lapinski. I'm still at 34 Washington Street and, um, the mayor kinda took the wind out of my sails a little bit by saying some of what I was gonna say. But as the, the builder and the sponsor of the Hanukkah menorah that will be put up on the common as of Monday, unless I get frostbite in the process, um, yeah, so Kathy, did you, did you hand those things out? Yeah, so all, all the counselors who are here in person should have, uh, a copy of the poster that's related to the event. But basically the way it's gonna work, similar to last year, that, uh, there's eight nights of Hanukkah and, um, I or someone with me will light the menorah each night. Um, and members of the public are welcome to come any or every night. The ceremony will take place on the sixth night, which is Monday, the 30th. Uh, last year we did the seventh night, but I didn't think it was feasible to do it on New Year's Eve. Um, and I'm expecting a bigger crowd this year because we're doing a lot more publicity. The Greenfield Business Association, uh, among others, has delightfully agreed to help promote it. And, um, as of tonight, five businesses in town have become sponsors. Um, I do expect more to join on, but so far, we have, um, Greenfield Solar, BK Tile and Stone, Taraza Restaurant, Laptop and Computer Repair, and Isaac Mass as sponsors. Um, and I did promise them that they would get publicity for doing that, so that's why I'm saying it now. Everyone, whether they're Jewish or not Jewish, are warmly invited to come to the ceremony. Um, and the event afterwards at the library, which I'm not allowed to call a party, will be fantastic this year. We've got a bigger room than last year and we will have the JCA Klezmer Ensemble playing fantastic holiday music for us. And that's, that's all as far as that goes. Um, and, uh, I'm, I'm really happy to be on this side of the table. So, um, good luck to all of you. Thank you for all of your service and I hope to see you on December 30th, 5:30 outside, 6 o'clock inside. And tell your friends.
Thank you. Pamela Goodwin?
Pamela Goodwin, 54 High Street. I guess I'll start off by saying I avoid federal and Main Street like the plague. I don't care if I'm on foot or if I'm in my car, but I detest that intersection and that long waiting. Um, and I actually go from High Street to Devens and around, and I love the roundabout at GCC. And that takes me out of this mess downtown as far as people trying to be there or my car waiting forever at that intersection. So, I would highly recommend that we take a look at either the timing of the lights or whatever. On Sunday morning, it only takes me two seconds to get there and through and then get down to church on, on Northampton. But otherwise, it's annoying when I'm on foot. And then I will say, um, I hate Facebook for the most part, but if I get on there, all of a sudden it's everything Greenfield and then it's this and this. And the malaise that's going on in social, social, um, issues in the city is very disconcerting to me. And, um, it's like a feeding frenzy with people going back and forth and they're so mad and what about this? And I'm probably not gonna quit Facebook, but I'm wishing that people would do what I had learned a long time ago. Go directly to the person you're upset with, have a pleasant conversation, bear your grievance. If that doesn't work, go and use the chain of command. I had to do that in corporations and businesses. I had to do it in the school setting for all those years. And I wish the heck that people would be calmer and deal with their issues in a different way instead of on, on Facebook and these various and sundry sites. Out of that, I will say that I'm really encouraged to be thinking that we have a warm and, warming center now that it's getting really cold. Sometimes there is a staffing problem with volunteers, so I would encourage people to find out if you could be helping, especially the people who like to complain about the benches that were moved. When the chief of police and the mayor and Counselor Wahab and the local business owners all had legit reasons why those benches had to be moved back further... all had legit reasons why those benches had to be moved back further. I would hope that the same people that are complaining incessantly about that could see if they could help man the salvation army on cold nights. So I encourage that. I'm going to go myself. The mayor has offered to go. If we can't staff it, then we can't open it and keep people safe. Secondly, I want to say that I'm hoping that people notice that the town city hall is open, the common. That was a big issue. It's all paved. We have, we have handicap parking. We have free parking to run in and out of city hall. And I would hope that some people would feel a little grateful about some things that are going well in our city instead of this constant complaining. Thank you.
Thank you. David Moscaratolo.
Good evening. Uh, David Moscaratolo, 43 Country Club Road. I apologize for looking down. I usually don't have notes, but I'm going to go through notes. So, and I'm speaking as a resident, not the Public Safety Commissioner. Farming is a right in Massachusetts, um, but I did talk with the Attorney General's Office and the municipal, uh, law unit. And, uh, as far as my understanding goes, and there will have to be some research on this, that the city can enforce provisions with respect to agricultural operations. The five acre requirement is part of the state's definition of what is a farm. But nowhere in the state's definition does it talk about quantity of chickens and roosters. The quantity was set by the charter from people of Greenfield. They based it off of, okay, if the state says that a farm technically is five acres of land, we should base some of the rights off of the five acres. But this, the set for roosters and chickens was based off of our charter. So, um, we can make provisions to that. Uh, so I disagree with the Agricultural Commission. They're right about the farming i- is a right, but I don't know if they know about all the details. I don't believe that the Living Waters Church at 450 Davis Street is registered as a farm in Greenfield. I don't think they meet the mass definition of a farm in Greenfield. I don't think they're registered as a tax status of a farm in Greenfield. And I don't think they produce or go to the market like the state definition says, which is a farm in Greenfield. They're a single family residence. They are listed in the town for tax purposes for 3.8 acres of land. They have 12 acres of land, but the house where the roosters are housed are 3.8 acres. They pay no taxes in Greenfield. I believe they should be subject to at least the minimum laws in Greenfield. The charter, again, like I said, was created by folks within Greenfield. Um, and I think there is room for provisions and, um, you know, I was going to bring, I, I taped the rooster this morning and I was gonna, for my last minute, play the tape because it went on for three or four hours, starting at 6:45 and it didn't stop. So, you know, I didn't bring the tape. I didn't want to annoy, I didn't want to annoy you playing it for the last minute, but you know, you can't sit out on your deck. In the wintertime, it's great. Your windows are closed. But you can't sit out your deck on a Sunday morning or a Saturday morning because you have to hear these birds squawking for hours and hours and hours. These folks don't own a farm. I mean, what happens to just common decency in Greenfield? Thank you for your time and I thank the Economic Committee too for hearing this last week. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And there's no one left online. So we'll close the, uh, public comment section. Um, I'll move on to the public hearing. Counselor Toronto?
Sorry. Approved memorandum of agreement between City of Greenfield and Mass Cops Local 470 and Transfer $32,657.92 from contact contract stabilization to police salary and wages.
Hold on a second. I think that's, is that the page 47?
Oh, shit. I don't have page 47. Oh, sorry. Thank you, Kathy. It didn't have, oh, it does have page number, sorry. Uh, in accordance with Home Road Charter, the Greenfield City Council will have a public hearing on Wednesday, December 18th, 2024 at 6:30 PM at John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street and Zoom. To receive public, I'd put on the following approved memorandum of agreement between City of Greenfield and Mass Cops Local 470 and Transfer $32,657.92 from contract stabilization to police salary and wages. The city council may consider the same on Wednesday, December 18th, 2024 at 6:30 PM at John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street and Zoom. Materials can be obtained from the city clerk's office, 14 Court Square from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday on or phone 413-772-1555, extension 6163. John Bottomley, City, Greenfield City Council President.
Thank you. I'll open this public hearing at 7:49 PM. And anyone that wants to come forward to speak specifically on this issue is welcome to. Let me know. And I don't see anyone signed up. And I'll have you read the second notice.
Approved memorandum of agreement between City of Greenfield and Mass Cops Local 470 and Transfer $32,657.92 from contract stabilization to police salary and wages.
Thank you. And I will close this hearing at 7:49 PM. We will move on to motions, orders and resolutions. The first one is the mayor's appointments. Counselor Goleb.
Are we going to take a break? Are we going to go straight to the motions?
Do you want, do we?
Yeah. How about we take a five minute break before we shift to voting on?
Sounds great. Five minute break.
Thank you.
Counselor Bullock, can you confirm that you are attending remotely?
I am here and attending remotely.
Thank you. Vice President Gilmore. Can you confirm that you were attending remotely? She is not. Counselor Healy, can you confirm you are attending remotely?
I'm here.
Thank you. And Counselor Minhaas, can you confirm that you are attending remotely?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you so much.
Excellent. We'll move back to motions. The mayor's appointments. Counselor Goleb.
Order number fiscal year 25030. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 210 affirms the following appointments and reappointments by the mayor. Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Patricia Williams term to expire December 31st, 2027. Human Rights Commission Kathleen Kenny term to expire December 31st, 2027. Public Library Board of Trustees Ann Dillon, Jim Zakara terms to expire December 31st, 2027. Mayor's Task Force Against Domestic Violence Naomi Bloodsoe term to expire December 31st, 2028. Scott Smith, Katie Rose Warren, Megan Cludier terms to expire December 31st, 2027. Planning Board George Tulumkus? My apologies. Term to expire December 31st, 2027. Public Safety Commission David Moscaratolo term to expire December 31st, 2027. Recreation Commission Danica Hutchletzler, Mert Jackway, Mary Phillips Alternate term to expire December 31st, 2027. Zoning Board of Appeals David Singer term to expire December 31st, 2027. Majority vote required.
I need a second on that?
Second.
And report from committee.
Unanimous positive recommendation.
Uh, open up for discussion. Um, I'd just like to add, I'm really thankful for all these people coming forward and especially two of the people on here have been sharing, um, David Singer on the zoning board of appeals has had some very contentious difficult issues, and I'm very thankful that he's willing to return. And also David Moscaratolo, who's done an outstanding job on public safety, and I'm glad that he's continuing to serve in that role. So I guess we will take a roll call vote.
Counselor Goleb?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Wandelowski?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaas?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Absolute minery.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes.
Next, we'll move on to the amendment of, uh, code chapter 49. Um, Counselor Goleb.
Order number fiscal year 25023. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council amend the code of the City of Greenfield, Chapter 49, meetings by adding Article 3 Hybrid Meetings attached as Exhibit A. And further amends the index of the code and further that nonsubstantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the City of Greenfield. Majority vote required.
And I need a second?
Second.
And report from committee.
This received a positive unanimous recommendation as well as a positive unanimous recommendation for a, an amendment. Would you like to discuss the amendment first? Or the rationale of the entire? Or discuss the entire piece first?
Let's, maybe if you've got an amendment to make, maybe let's jump right into that.
Yeah. So we're looking at 497D. And to add the language in accordance with Americans with Disabilities Act to the end of the first sentence.
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Sure. So 497D, the end of the first sentence in accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act.
We need a second on that?
A second.
Second.
And open up for discussion? On the amendment.
So I'll share that this, there was a request from a community member who wanted to ensure that this, um, ordinance would be in accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. While the current language as proposed is, um, the, the language reasonable access infers that it's in accordance with the act, I wanted to make it explicit to make sure that those concerns were addressed.
Um, any discussion on that amendment? Counselor Toronto?
I don't really have any objection to it. I guess just it seemed like very broad language as to what, what was being like codified. To address the concerns that were not already in the language that was there. I guess that was, that was, I guess, my confusion.
Do you want me to read the entire sentence that would be amended? Cause I think that it is pretty clear if you read the entire sentence, but I would be happy to do so.
No, I mean, I mean, if it, if it covered all that, that I just, I just wasn't, I guess I wasn't, um, understanding the distinction. To, to, to the amendment is what I mean, to the amendment.
The amendment, the, I will read the sentence just to make it clear. All meetings, this, this clause states that all meetings conducted with remote access, including hybrid meetings, shall provide equal opportunity and reasonable access to persons with disabilities. And we are adding, and there is some redundancy in this addition, but it's just making it explicit and abundantly clear that it will, we will provide equal opportunity and reasonable access to persons with disabilities in accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Any other questions, comments on the amendment? Cause we'll do a roll call vote.
On the amendment, Counselor Goleb?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Wandelowski?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaas?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The amendment passes.
So now we're back to the amended, uh, motion, uh, and open that up for discussion. Yes, Counselor Goleb.
Sure. I'm, I'm wondering if we could invite Matt and Fernando up here.
That's great.
Yeah. Um, I'll share that this, um, I have a lot of gratitude for both, both Matt and Fernando and your work on this. Um, I started talking to Fernando about this ordinance in late 2023, just to see if this would be possible. And, uh, your enthusiasm for this would really, uh, pave the way for us being able to do the, have the collaboration that we've had. And it's been a year of collaborating with you Fernando and Matt. You've been incredibly helpful with, with Kathy, um, with Christian, with the mayor's department. Um, we have gone through more drafts of this than I can remember. And, and I think I'm just so grateful that for it, it, this hasn't been the easiest year and this collaboration has just been such a bright spot. And so, thank you and, and, um, thank you for being here to answer questions from councilors.
Yes, open up to questions. Yes, Counselor Garrett?
So I just have a logistical question about, so say we start a meeting and the internet goes out. We've done maybe a couple of motions before that. And then we would presumably have to cancel the meeting after the point where we've done a couple of motions with remote access there. Is that right? Like this is basically changing it. So if we don't have the ability, it says the proceedings of the body, public body as they are occurring. So that tells me that like an audio recording after the fact wouldn't cut it. Is that true? And I'm not really sure who can answer this question best. Maybe the city committee members?
Yeah, that's, you're, you're right. Okay.
So I, I brought this question. So another, we've also been collaborating with Javier Luengo from the ACLU and so have had significant, like every step, we've also been consulting with lawyers from the ACLU to ensure that this is in accordance with the law. And, um, I reached out to Javier last week, um, when appointments and ordinances needed to immediately go to, or quickly go to remote because, um, because of the situation in city hall. And I looked in it, into the ordinance and, um, section, um, what is the number here? Section 497G. It's, it states that in the event that a public body required to conduct hybrid meetings has provided public notice of an upcoming meeting and an emergency subsequently makes either in-person access or remote access impossible, the public body shall consider the practicality of rescheduling the meeting to a time when it can conduct a hybrid meeting. If rescheduling is not practical, the body shall provide a reasonable advance notice to the public and conduct the meeting entirely in person or entirely remotely. And I, and he verified that, um, this, that, that the, um, we, that the advance notice that Tammy gave in emailing everyone, so, so many different, um, department heads and the councilors and everyone, that that would, uh, count as a reasonable advance notice. So this is kind of indirectly answering, but this was a question that came up for me as well.
Yep. Sorry. Sorry to interject. But they didn't, in that, they did not define what was considered reasonable?
I just, we're all in the world of like trying to follow like letter of the law, so I just, I'm pointing that out, what's reasonable.
Right. That is up to interpret, like a lot of, we use the word reasonable a lot in our laws and they are up for interpretation. And the opinions of the lawyers there was that that was reasonable.
Counselor Gordon?
I just had a response to Counselor Garrett, but it was answered, so I'm good. Thank you. I will actually though, take this opportunity just to say that I think, you know, I've seen this go through a lot of iterations. We've talked about it at ANO multiple times. I'm very excited about this proposal. I really appreciate all of the incredible hard work that's gone into it. I think that, you know, this is something like no one imagined before COVID that, you know, so many public meetings could be hybrid and could be made available to people who aren't able to come and attend in person. And it's really a huge step forward that we've realized that we can be that much more open and make government that much more participatory. And I think that codifying this, you know, we're really on the kind of the cutting edge. Like I don't think that a lot of cities in Massachusetts have done that yet. So we're really setting, you know, an important high bar that clearly we're in a good position to meet, to, you know, make sure that not only can as many folks as possible in Greenfield participate in public meetings, but, you know, encouraging other communities to do it as well. So I think that this is really exciting and I appreciate all the work.
Any other comments? Well, seeing that, I guess we will do a roll call vote on this. Thank you.
On the motion as amended, Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Masto Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Wandelowski?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaus?
Yes.
Counselor Torondo?
No.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The amendment passes.
So now we're back to the amended motion and open that up for discussion. Yes, Counselor Golub?
Sure. I'm wondering if we could invite Matt and Fernando up here?
That's great.
Yeah. I'll share that this, I have a lot of gratitude for both Matt and Fernando and your work on this. I started talking to Fernando about this ordinance in late 2023, just to see if this would be possible. And your enthusiasm for this would really pave the way for us being able to do, have the collaboration that we've had. And it's been a year of collaborating with you Fernando and Matt. You've been incredibly helpful with Kathy, with Christian, with the mayor's department. We have gone through more drafts of this than I can remember. And I think I'm just so grateful that for, this hasn't been the easiest year and this collaboration has just been such a bright spot. And so, thank you and thank you for being here to answer questions from counselors.
Yes, open up to questions. Yes, Counselor Garrett?
So I just have a logistical question about, so say we start a meeting and the internet goes out. We've done maybe a couple of motions before that and then we would presumably have to cancel the meeting after the point where we've done a couple of motions with remote access there? Is that right? Like this is basically changing it. So if we don't have the ability, it says the proceedings of the body, public body as they are occurring. So that tells me that like an audio recording after the fact wouldn't cut it. Is that true? And I'm not really sure who can answer this question best, maybe the city committee members?
Yeah, that's, you're right. Okay.
So I brought this question. So another, we've also been collaborating with Javier Luengo from the ACLU and so have had significant, like every step, we've also been consulting with lawyers from the ACLU to ensure that this is in accordance with the law. And I reached out to Javier last week when appointments and ordinances needed to immediately go to or quickly go to remote because of the situation in City Hall. And I looked into the ordinance and section, what is the number here? Section 497G, it states that in the event that a public body required to conduct hybrid meetings has provided public notice of an upcoming meeting and an emergency subsequently makes either in-person access or remote access impossible, the public body shall consider the practicality of rescheduling the meeting to a time when it can conduct a hybrid meeting. If rescheduling is not practical, the body shall provide a reasonable advance notice to the public and conduct the meeting entirely in person or entirely remotely. And I, and he verified that this, that the, we, that the advance notice that Tammy gave in emailing everyone, so many different department heads and the counselors and everyone, that that would count as a reasonable advance notice. So this is kind of indirectly answering, but this was a question that came up for me as well.
Yep.
Sorry. Sorry to interject. But they didn't, in that, they did not define what was considered reasonable?
It's.
I know it's splitting hairs. I just, we're all in the world of like trying to follow like letter of the law, so I just, I'm pointing that out, what's reasonable.
Right. That is up to interpret, like a lot of, we use the word reasonable a lot in our laws and they are up for interpretation. And the opinions of the lawyers there was that that was reasonable.
Counselor Gordon?
I just had a response to Counselor Garrett, but it was answered, so I'm good. Thank you. I will actually though, take this opportunity just to say that I think, you know, I've seen this go through a lot of iterations. We've talked about it at ANO multiple times. I'm very excited about this proposal. I really appreciate all of the incredible hard work that's gone into it. I think that, you know, this is something like no one imagined before COVID that, you know, so many public meetings could be hybrid and could be made available to people who aren't able to come and attend in person. And it's really a huge step forward that we've realized that we can be that much more open and make government that much more participatory. And I think that codifying this, you know, we're really on the kind of the cutting edge. Like I don't think that a lot of cities in Massachusetts have done that yet. So we're really setting, you know, an important high bar that clearly we're in a good position to meet, to, you know, make sure that not only can as many folks as possible in Greenfield participate in public meetings, but, you know, encouraging other communities to do it as well. So I think that this is really exciting and I appreciate all the work.
Any other comments? Well, seeing that, I guess we will do a roll call vote on this. Thank you.
On the motion as amended, Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Masto Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Wandelowski?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaus?
Yes.
Counselor Torondo?
No.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes by majority.
Next, we'll move on to the memorandum of agreement. Counselor Torondo? Page 71.
I don't think I have page 71. Oh, you're helping here. Thank you. Sorry, my computer did not want to work today. Move that, city council moved it be ordered pursuant to MGLC 150E subsection 7, that the city council approved the memorandum of agreement between the city of Greenfield and MassCops Local 470 and transfer from contract stabilization account number 8403.1080, the total sum of $32,657.92 to fund the first year cost items to be allocated as follows. Police salary and wages 0100.2100.5111. Majority vote required.
And I need a second for that?
Second.
And this did not go to committee because we had the problem at City Hall, so it's coming right to the floor of the council. So I don't know if you want to address this, Counselor Torondo, or I can just open it up to the floor to if people have questions on this.
I'd be totally privy to you opening it to the floor because I don't, we didn't have a meeting, so.
Do we have any questions or comments on this contract, this memorandum of agreement?
I, yep. Counselor Torondo? The only thing that I'll say for the record was there were some concerns I had and I did talk with the mayor about those and I felt more satisfied with them. Not, I will say, full disclosure, not entirely satisfied. I think I've expressed my concerns with some of the previous, I feel like part of this was following suit to the memorandum that was three years ago, I believe, the last contractual negotiation. And as I said, for the record, sorry guys, I know you're here, you're looking at me, but I am dutied with the fiscal responsibility as chair of Ways and Means and I 100%, 100% disagree with our 100% funding of what was called the Quinn bill since 50% of it was supposed to be supported by the state. And I would encourage anyone who disagrees with me to petition to the state to reinstate the Quinn bill because I think it's important. I just don't think that our municipality should be funding 100% of it as the original agreement up until it was canceled in, I don't know, like 2003, 2005, somewhere in there. They stopped funding 50% of it. I would like the state to fund the other 50% of it as they're supposed to for all municipalities, not just Greenfield. I just feel like as a person who's supposed to have a voice for the taxpayer money in the town, without that support from the state, I don't feel like this is a, that portion of it is a positive negotiation, but I'm also not the person who negotiates that contract. I'm not going to stymie it. I'm not going to stifle it. I'm not going to say we shouldn't go through with it. I just would like to make any echo I can make to the ether out there that maybe a senator or somebody would push for the state to fund this rather than it having to be totally burdened upon our municipality to fund that. That's all.
And just to clarify for everyone, I believe that's Article 11, which is educational incentives. Do we have, yes, Counselor Garrett?
I am looking at the MOU as well as the teacher contract right now. And so I'm looking on page 14 of the police mass cop wage scale for the first half of fiscal year 25. We've got a step one patrol officer with an annual salary of $60,819.20. And in the teacher contract, if you're a first-year teacher with a PhD, you're walking away with $57,516. And so I have actually really no problem with the negotiation that the police union made. I think, you know, frankly, the work is that of public service and it's difficult and it's challenging and, you know, I'm happy that they're able to negotiate a salary that is commensurate with some of the labors they're doing. And a first-year teacher with a PhD should not be making less than a patrol officer with no degree requirements. And so that $60,000 there, you know, with those Quinn bill provisions, you're looking at like a 10% increase within associates. I think it's another 10 within a bachelor's and then up and up and up. So just, you know, again, as Counselor Torondo said, the city council does not negotiate contracts, but if we value education in the city, I hope that because the teachers are up, that this contract is looked at when we're considering what a teacher in their first year especially, where it's especially hard to retain teachers. I think it's, the stat is something like in the first five years of teaching, you lose about half of teachers. And part of those is the salary. So again, no opposition to this contract per se, although I do have concerns about the fiscal responsibility of taking on more obligations as Counselor Torondo does. But I just want to put that note out about the teachers and what they're getting paid compared to our other public servants, all of whom are doing worthy work.
Thank you. Any other comments? Looks like we're ready to vote on this. Roll call vote?
Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Masto Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Wandelowski?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Abstain.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaus?
Yes.
Counselor Torondo?
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes by majority.
We'll move next to zoning amendments. Counselor Bullock?
Yeah, if Counselor Garrett, if you are okay with doing this, since I wasn't planning on being here and you're in person, I'm happy to have you give the report and read.
Okay.
Unless, yeah, unless you won't. Okay.
All right, so at the.
Oops, we need the motion read first on page 87.
Okay, let me pull that up. The city council moved it to be ordered that the city council of Greenfield amend the zoning ordinance, Chapter 200, Section 200-12, semi-residential district SR by adding language in bold and by deleting language and strike through as follows and attached to Exhibit A, and further amends the table of contents and ignorance of the code, and further that nonsubstantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield. Simple majority vote required.
Need a second on that?
Second then.
And would you mind doing a report from committee, Counselor Garrett?
So we had four members in attendance and of the four members, we had a positive unanimous from three with an abstention from one. And from the planning board, it was actually the same, I believe. There was one abstention and four in that case in favor of the amendment. So we had a discussion about this. This was initially a proposal that I put forward, working with Director Tuareg, to make multifamily dwellings in the semi-residential district by right. This got amended in subcommittee based on feedback from members of the community who had previously been opposition to it. So you, if you've attended a economic development committee meeting or watched the tape, there have been lots of folks showing up and giving feedback. And I think that the fact that they're not here tonight is pretty good evidence that they're satisfied with the amendment that we made. And so the motion as amended would allow 24 units or less by right in the semi-residential district and 25 units and above would require a special permit. This would make no changes to any other zoning districts in the city. And again, it's just the semi-residential district where this change would occur.
And I'll open this up for questions, comments. Counselor Masto Tataro?
I have a question. Oh, I just got to find it. That entire, the amendment, 40, well, that coincides with this 2-40, right? 200-40? Let me find it here. That used, that's on what, 91? Page 91? Did it strike through?
Sorry, are we treating this as, sorry, Counselor Masto, are we treating this as individuals?
Well, we are, but this affects the other. I mean.
Are you asking about the other zoning amendment?
We're talking about 200-12.
Right. But you're striking multifamily in accordance with 200-40.
Right, but that's the next one.
That's a different, that's a different.
So it's confusing the way this has this on the document, because the first amendment is twenty dash two hundred dash forty.
It's because two hundred dash twelve is the section of the zoning code that deals with the semi-residential district, and two hundred dash forty is the section of the code that deals with multifamily dwellings. So we're, we are voting, this specific one, is to strike through multifamily dwellings needed by, for special permit in the semi-residential district. The next motion will amend that, will amend section, the multifamily dwelling section, two hundred dash forty, to say that, that projects with twenty-four units or above will need a special permit. So there's different sections of the zoning code. One section needs, deals with the semi-residential, and the other section deals with the multifamily dwellings.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Right. May I?
Yes.
The potential problem with this is, if you vote one way on two hundred dash twelve and vote a different way on two hundred dash forty, you have a problem, potentially. Because you could have a, if you want to put a semi-res, semi-res, you want to put twenty-four units in a semi-res, by right in semi-residential, right? And if we disagree with, or somebody disagrees with two hundred dash forty, or vice versa, what do you do? Right?
Councilor Garrett, do you want to stab at that?
So if, let's say this motion passes, and we have a special permit process for twenty-five units and above, and then we vote not to change the other section, lifting the cap. So right now, there's a hard cap of twenty-four units in the whole city. The, this amendment would be a moot point for subsection C nine, allowing twenty-five units and above. So a special permit could be issued, but you couldn't build it, because there would be a prohibition on twenty-four units and above, or twenty-five units and above. So I understand the concern, but you could vote for this in the affirmative, and if we don't change that cap, this could still be an operative law, if that makes sense. So you can, we can do both. Like, I understand the conflict potentially, but if there's a hard cap, then subsection C nine is just moot. That make sense?
I suppose.
Okay.
I'm trying to make sense of it.
Councilor Bullock, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just, I'll say two, two things about this. The first is that, you know, if someone doesn't want to support this, they will vote no for both, both pieces that are to follow. The second thing that I want to add is that it was not lost on me that every planning, every EDC meeting and public hearing that we had on these, we had to walk past or walk over or around people that were going to sleep outside that night. And so, you know, these are, these are, this is a necessary thing for our city to do, and it's really aligned with what is happening across the state in order to have it even be a potential for, for organizations, or developers, or local, local developers to build more housing, and we absolutely need that in Greenfield.
May I?
Councilor Masti-Tataro?
Yeah, I understand all that, but if somebody knows the answer to this, why originally did it require a special permit to allow multifamily dwellings in the semi-residential district? Does anybody know?
I have a guess, that it's the same reason we have a height restriction on buildings in downtown. You know, it's just a fear of development, you know, basically, would be my assumption. I mean, honestly, you know, it's...
Councilor Goleb, did you want to respond to that?
Not to our attention.
Okay.
But I would like to.
But I would like to. Yes.
Yeah, I just want to say that I watched EDC, and I'm a big fan of collaboration, and I, I saw the community come out with concern about this, and I saw Jo Marie Jackson give her suggested amendment, and I saw you all take her up on that, and I was really, like, heartened, instead of disheartened, I was really heartened by that. And, and I agree. I think the fact that so many people showed up at EDC, and they're not here tonight, and I haven't, I just double-checked my email, haven't heard any complaints, it would be, it would feel good to, to, you know, hear some appreciation for the good work that you all did. But this, I'm excited about the collaboration and the compromise that this represents.
Any more comments? Yes, Councilor Garrett?
I just want to thank Councilor Goleb for mentioning that, and I a hundred percent agree. You know, coming through this process and having, you know, fairly contentious meetings on EDC for months and months and months, the fact that, you know, some of the folks who were in opposition to this came out with a proposal that is workable and reasonable, is something I'm really grateful for. So I also view this as a potential model for other potential changes. You know, there are, we don't have to have it be all or nothing. It can be different thresholds for different zones. What works in the semi-residential may not work in the rural residential. It almost certainly wouldn't. So I appreciate the idea of having by right for things we want to encourage, and a special permit available as an option for things that we want to take an extra look at. And I think that really did assuage a lot of the community's concerns, which is fabulous. You know, that's kind of how democracy is supposed to work. So, thank you for mentioning that.
Any more comments, or are we ready to vote? I guess we will do a roll call vote.
Councilor Goleb?
Yes.
Councilor Gordon?
Yes.
Councilor Masti-Tataro?
Yes.
Councilor Bullock?
Yes.
Councilor Perry?
No.
Councilor Wandelowski?
Yes.
Councilor Healy?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilor Minhaus?
Yes.
Councilor Toranzo?
Yep, good work, folks.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes by majority.
We'll move on to the next zoning amendment?
Point of order.
Oh, yes.
Do we need to vote on the whole thing? Because wasn't that just the amendment?
There was no amendment to section two hundred twelve. That was the main motion for that section.
Okay.
That was just the strike throughs?
I see, okay. So for the next one, we have to do, thank you.
So Councilor Garrett, if you could read page ninety-one?
Yep, absolutely. Let's see, order number FY twenty-five dash zero twenty-four dot one. The City Council moved it to be ordered that the City Council of Greenfield amend the zoning ordinance, Chapter 200, Section 200 dash forty, multifamily dwelling, subsection B, procedure, by striking paragraph four in its entirety as follows and attached Exhibit A, and further amends the table of contents, contents, rather, and index of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Code of the City of Greenfield. Simple majority vote required.
I need a second on that?
Second.
And Councilor Garrett, I guess we'll continue our discussion.
Just as far as the report from committee, this was three votes in favor and one abstention. And do you want me to speak to it further, or do you want to just open it up?
Do we still need to do the amendment, is that correct, on page ninety, I believe? The vote, that you voted on amending this in, in EDC, is that correct?
Okay, so that's where I was asking a moment ago. My, the zoning amendment one on page ninety was about the last amendment. Why am I so confused about this?
No, this, you're, sorry, you're correct, Councilor Garrett, that this, this, the information on page ninety is the amendment that you made for this two hundred dash forty, because this is the section on multifamily dwellings. So the two highlighted areas on page ninety, those are the amendments that you want to make. You want to make an amendment where section thirteen and section nine.
Okay.
Point of, point of information, I maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilor Garrett, what you're referencing is that, under the zoning amendment one, there is an amend section, which had to do with two hundred dash twelve.
Correct.
Which says semi-residential district of the zoning ordinance to allow multifamily dwellings by right instead of by special permit, by asking, by adding the following new number under subsection B, uses permitted, but then it turns into two hundred dash forty.
Yeah, it's confusing because it's copy and pasted. It's not the entire code, word for word. So if you read our, the actual code, it doesn't read like this. It's like copy and paste sections.
Right, so, okay. Point being, I, I see that the, the motion and the voted for portion that came from subcommittee, the motion was one thing, and the, the vote was to do something else, but the immediate backup now pertains to a different subsection, which may or may not, when in the grand scheme of things, be relevant, but I guess going forward, that should probably be cleaned up before brought to Old Castle for clarity purposes.
Yeah, I definitely have to say, it is not clear. I will just say that for sure. The way this is printed, the way... Okay.
I was thinking if we had a reference?
So the way I understood what is going on here, so the, on page eighty-seven, that's about the semi-residential zone. We needed to amend the stuff on page eighty-seven using the text on page ninety. And so my understanding is we needed to vote to amend, which I think that's what we did, and then we needed to go back to basically page eighty-seven and vote on the amended ordinance effectively. And then what I just read is the other zoning amendment about the cap on units total. Does that make sense? Okay. I am sleep deprived, but...
I think that makes sense. It's not very clear on the printed page at all, that that's what you're going for, and I don't like that, that you can't actually read that and determine that, based on what I'm seeing here.
On page eighty, I'm sorry, on page ninety, where it's...
May I ask a question? Order twenty-five dash zero twenty-four regarding section two hundred dash twelve. Amended two hundred dash twelve to read as shown on page eighty-eight, Exhibit A. Amend section two hundred twelve semi-residential SR of the zoning ordinance to allow multifamily dwellings by right instead of by special permit, by adding the following new number under section B, uses permitted. Number thirteen, multifamily dwelling in accordance with two hundred dash forty.
So I think where the confusion is coming in...
Is, is...
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
So that amendment, that amendment indicated on page eighty-eight, that's what was just voted for section twelve.
So...
There was no amendment proposed. Council Healy has his hand up.
So the, page eighty-eight is what was initially proposed.
Correct.
And then we amended it, or made a suggestion to amend it in subcommittee that's on page ninety. And that's what I was referring to when I was talking about the twenty-four units and under, and the twenty-five units and above, and the community input and all that. So I think what's confusing is that there's an amendment on eighty-eight, which was the initial language. That came to some committee, and then at subcommittee, we took the suggestion of the community and amended it, again, I'm using probably a long range, on page ninety. So my impression of what we were voting on was what was on page ninety as an amendment.
May I ask one more question?
Yes.
So what was just voted on by the council did not include the language on page ninety that says twenty-four units and under.
True.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I think I can, I think I can clear this up. It's, it is very confusing in the packet. The way that the code is copy and pasted is not the way that the code reads. If you look at section two hundred dash twelve semi-residential district of our code, all it is, is that list of uses permitted, and then uses permitted by special permits. And so the last motion that we just voted on strikes multifamily dwellings in accordance with section twenty, two hundred dash forty, from that list. This, the one that we are now voting on is in reference to section two hundred dash forty, multifamily dwellings. That is a totally different section, and it does not look the way that it looks in our packet. So that is maybe what is confusing people, is that you would have had to refer to, you would have had to refer to where it says, like, amend section two hundred dash twelve semi-residential in our packet, and then it says number thirteen, and by strikes, striking subsection, that does not, is not how the code of two hundred dash forty reads.
Okay.
So two hundred dash forty, the section on multifamily dwellings, what we want to amend, is what we want to amend and make twenty-four units or above by special permit.
If I may?
Hold on, let me, let's, I want to, I want to go with Clerk Scott, quick.
May, may I ask Councilor Bullock a direct question?
Yes.
Okay. The motion that was voted for two hundred dash twelve is, should have twenty-four units and under attached to it by recommendation of the EDC, is that correct? Councilor Bullock?
That, I believe that the reason that it's not attached there is because we are striking that, that we are striking multifamily dwelling from, from uses needed with a special permit. So I believe we're striking that completely. And then when you go to section two hundred dash forty, for, like, if you wanted to build a multifamily dwelling in the semi-residential district, you would then read the next section. You would see you don't need, you don't necessarily need a special permit. And then you would go to section two hundred dash forty and say, okay, I want to build a multifamily, I'm reading the multifamily section, and it says, I can build a multifamily unless it's twenty-four units or more, and then I'm required to have a special permit. So my understanding of how the zoning law would read is that we would strike multifamily dwelling from, from necessary special permit in two hundred dash twelve, and then we would specify under multifamily dwelling section in two hundred dash forty, that you're allowed to build a multifamily dwelling unless it's twenty-four units or above. And that would be, that information would be under two hundred dash forty, the multifamily dwelling code. That is my understanding. I would, I would appreciate if Councilor Healy has other, other input on this, because I'm sure he's more familiar with reading code to actually build things.
Councilor Healy?
Yeah, so I agree a hundred percent. So I think in the EDC meeting, we originally did have it under the first, the first item, which kind of, we're striking out and saying, okay, it's by right. So in SR, it's by right, you can build multifamily dwellings. At the time, we did say, let's put it under that item, but after further review, I think this is a much cleaner way of doing it, because now we're striking, in the next order, which we're on now, we're striking out the, the definition of twenty-four units, which was the... which was the maximum previously allowed for multifamily dwellings. So we said, if it was 25 units, you weren't allowed to build any multifamily dwellings anywhere, right? So now we're being very specific under section 200-40 that we will allow multifamily dwellings under each zoning district that it is permitted by, by right. However, you're only allowed up to 24 before you need a special permit. I think this is a better way of doing it. So I'm in favor of, of this approach. Does that, I just want to make sure Counselor Garrett kind of understands that approach as well because this was kind of his, this was his task here, so.
I'm happy with whatever gets us to what we talked about at EDC. So, if we need to, you know, so I, I don't, you know, I think the language on page 90 made sense to me in the process, but if folks are looking at it another way, whatever we need to do to vote on getting what we all agreed on, I'm down.
Yeah, I, I think this is the clean way of doing that. It's clearly defining what multifamily dwellings are defined as, as definition in the zoning amendment, and it's telling you what the caps are before you need a special permit. I think this is the best way to do it.
Do you want to propose that amendment?
Well, it's already kind of done, right? So. I will propose that amendment. I propose to amend section 200-40 to say 24 units and under, and by striking C9 and renumbering the remaining items. And, I don't know how to word that actually. Sorry. Amend section 200-40 multifamily dwellings of the zoning ordinance by striking, striking section B4 in its entirety and add in 24 units and above by right, 25 units and above by special permit.
Second.
You mean 24 and below, right?
Second is clarified.
Yeah, sorry, I have a head cold. I'm feeling like crap.
We're all doing our best.
So just, I guess discussions on that amendment.
Well, I understand that. It makes sense to me, so I'm fine with that.
Is there actually an amendment? I guess what I'm going to ask, because I think it was already listed as that. It was just two separate orders, which I think was the confusion.
If we have to vote on it twice, let's just do it.
Well, we already voted on the first order, right? So now we're on to FY 25-024.1, right? Right, but we already voted on that. So that one's dead and gone.
This amendment is definitely for the next order, which is FY 25-024.1.
Point one, right. We already voted on.
Correct, you're correct.
Now would be moot, even if we screwed up.
Okay.
Which I don't think we did, but.
So there's an amendment on the floor?
I don't think there's an amendment, right?
Counselor, Counselor Healy made an amendment, and Counselor Garrett seconded the amendment. To.
Okay, point of clarification.
Yes.
What is the amendment to what was already there? Because it sounds like there was no amendment to what is already written on the page.
Counselor Gordon?
At the risk of jumping into this fray and making it even more confusing, it seems to me like page 90, the amendment that is written on page 90 actually belongs to the order on page 91. Right? So all we have to do, because we just voted on the previous order, so now we have to propose order number FY 25-024.1, and then propose the amendment, right?
I read that already.
Oh, you did?
Yes, you did, yeah.
See, I'm just totally lost. Okay. So in that case, I'm not entirely clear on what the problem is because the amendment does seem fairly clear.
I don't think there's an amendment to anything. It's just.
No, we have to add the amendment. We have to add the amendment that says that multifamily dwellings in accordance with section 200-40, 24 units and under requires, does not require a special permit, and 24 units and above does require a special permit. What happened is that the zoning sections are clumped together and, and they do not, they don't go together. So what Counselor Gordon just said is exactly true. The page ahead, page 90, ahead of the order on page 91, is the appropriate language. So we need to, we need to add in section 200-40, which is our zoning code related to multifamily dwellings, that 25 units and above requires a special permit, and multifamily dwellings in accordance with section 200-40, 25 units and under does not. This, there is, there is two necessary motions that are traveling together that are two different things.
Right, but, but page 90 has to do with the backup to the order we already approved, which was number FY 25-024.
No, it does not. It does not. It's, it's confusing the way that the zoning law is plopped in with the motions.
Right, but we haven't even read the motion on FY 25-024.1 yet. That's what I'm saying. We haven't. We haven't gotten there yet. We, we have backup on the page before it that you're saying is going to be for a forthcoming amendment, which hasn't even happened yet. That's what I'm saying is, is the point, we're, 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 we're not debating the, the facts of what is going to happen. It's just, it's the order of operations, and we haven't gotten there yet because we still are stuck on FY 25-024, which we already did. We haven't read the motion. All the backup for it was until page 90.
Point of order, respectfully, he read that motion already.
He did, yeah.
Not the one on, right, we already voted on that one. We didn't read the next one.
We did. We read the.
So we're going on backup on the one behind it.
200-40, that's the one we just, we read that we were talking about.
Can I, can I propose that we just read order number FY 25-024.1? Whether it's been read or not already, there's clearly enough confusion. Maybe we should just read it again and then propose the amendment. What's that? No, it has not.
Yes, it has.
He proposed it, but for the sake of clarity, perhaps we should read the full order and then read the proposed amendment again, just to.
I withdraw my amendment.
Can I? May I ask a question? So, motion 25-024, the motion was made, it was seconded, and it was voted with no amendment. Okay? Motion 25-024.1 was made and seconded. There was an amendment proposed by Counselor Healy and seconded by Counselor Garrett. Counselor Healy has withdrawn his portion of the motion to make it a little bit cleaner at this moment, if that's even possible. Counselor Garrett, do you withdraw your second on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So the main motion, 024.1, is still on the floor. May I ask a question?
Please.
If order 024 that has already been voted, and we're all clear on that, if it should have been amended to include comma 24 units and under, I can help with that.
I think that's what should have happened.
Okay. However, we have another order on the floor. Excuse me? Yes, on the floor. The motion on the floor is as originally proposed for section 400, section 240. If I'm correct, that needs to be amended to include number nine, multifamily dwelling with 200-40, 25 units and above, and the renumbering of 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18. Is that correct?
Yes.
With the addition of the language 24 units and under for the new number 13.
For the new number 13.
The language on page 90 is the amendment that we talked about at EDC. For the first fiscal order.
Okay. So the new number 13, is it supposed to be in 240 or 212?
212. I, yes. So if we look at.
Okay, that, stop, please. Okay. If the council votes 200-40, and someone makes an amendment to 200-40 with the language shown on page 90, including number nine, multifamily dwelling in accordance with 240, comma, 25 units and above, and the renumbering of the rest of that section, and the council considers that and votes it, there could be, if the council wishes, a motion for reconsideration on 25-024, and we can go back to that and correct the error. So, if that makes sense, I would suggest, and correct me if I'm wrong, someone make a motion to amend 200-40 as written on page 90 of the council packet, which indicates a new number nine, multifamily dwelling in accordance with 200-40, comma, 25 units and above, and renumbers the remainder of the section. That would be a suggested amendment, which may or may not want to be made by the council.
I would be happy to make that amendment if you tell me exactly what to say.
So, if you were to say, motion to amend 240.
Motion to amend 240.
As indicated on page 90.
As indicated on page 90. I'm, I'm not going to do this wrong.
Number nine, multifamily dwelling in accordance with 240, comma, 25 units and above.
Number nine, multifamily dwelling in accordance with 200-40, 25 units and above.
And renumber the remainder of the section.
And renumber the remainder of this section.
Period.
Period. So help me God.
That needs a second.
Second.
Now we have a second on that.
What is already written there?
It already says multifamily dwelling in accordance with 200-40, comma, 25 units and above. It's already there.
It is already there because that was a motion made at EDC on December 2nd to change the original proposal.
Counselor Gordon?
I hate to say this, but I think that we should table this. I think that we're all confused. I'm very confused right now. I think anyone who is watching or looks at the video of this is going to be very confused. I really want us to do this. I really want us to do this right. And I, I don't think that we are in a position right now to actually do it in a way that feels solid and, like, good to go.
I have one final, I'm sorry, I should wait.
Does, does, does that motion need a second?
Are you, so is that a movement?
I would second the motion to table. Counselor Gordon made a motion to table, and I seconded it.
Okay, and that's. Yes, a motion to table is non-debatable, so we need a roll call vote on that? It's the amendment.
You're tabling the amendment because.
How do I table, move to table the whole thing?
I think we have to do the amendment first.
I think I know how to get out of this knot. I really do, but, you know.
But, you know, I think, I, I just have to say, well, we, we have a motion to table, so we really need to do that, that, that vote.
Is this to table the specific amendment or to table the whole thing?
On the motion to table, all of 25-024.1, Counselor Goleb.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor Mastertataro.
Yes.
Counselor Bullock.
No.
Counselor Perry.
No.
Counselor Wandelowski.
No.
Counselor Healy.
No.
Counselor Brown.
No.
Counselor Garrett.
No.
Counselor Minhas.
No.
Counselor Toronzo.
Yeah, homework.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
Yes to tabling?
Yeah.
Okay. The motion is tabled, or the motion is not tabled.
So we're back at it again.
All right.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I say something here?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm like exhausted. I've been traveling and this is absolutely a motion that required homework to be done. I think I heard you say that, that this would go on your homework list, Counselor Toronzo. I personally spent a lot of time reading this code and understanding it and parsing out the two separate motions to understand them so that in the EDC meeting last month, I was clear on what needed to be done. I do not think we made a mistake. Section 200-12 semi-residential, the section of our code under general legislation, has two areas, section B and section C. Section B says uses permitted. Section C says uses permitted by special permit. All we need to do in that section is strike multifamily dwelling from uses permitted by special permit in the semi-residential district. I believe that's what we've done.
Yes.
Kathy, can you, sorry, I can't see you, I can't see you all, but Counsel, President Bottomley, you're saying yes, that's what we've done.
I believe that's what we've done, yes.
Okay. The next motion is section 200-40 under general. is section two hundred dash forty, under general legislation, in our code. Under that section, it's a whole section of our code that is specific to multifamily dwellings. There is many sections in that code, but it does not list out like it does on that page ninety. That's not a part of section two hundred dash forty. So, that may be where some confusion has happened. I think there's a lot of confusing things here. Section forty lays out, in section A of it, of two hundred dash forty, in section A, when a special, special permit is required, when a special permit is required for multifamily dwellings, what the procedure is, and when it's not, and what our multifamily structures can, can look like and, and, and such. What we need to add to this section is an amendment that says that if you want to build a multifamily dwelling that is twenty-four units or under, you do not need a special permit. If it's twenty-five or above, you do. That is what needs to be added to section two hundred dash forty of our code, and that is the second motion that we needed to vote on this evening. That's all I'll say, 'cause I just said a lot, but I hope that that clarifies what needs to happen with these two motions and what they're about. And if we do end up tabling this, I would implore my fellow counselors to please read these two sections. It took, I had to read them a few times to wrap my brain around what needed to be done here. But I would implore you to read these two sections before we come back to the table next month.
Okay. And also, I wanna say, I think a lot of us are getting what needs to be done, what's printed is very confusing. That's the problem, and that's what's creating an issue about, should we be voting on things in public when what's written is very confusing? That's my, 'cause I get what, what, I under, I comprehend wha- what we're trying to do. Counselor Goleb?
Yeah, I, this was clearly an item that was, that is important to the community, and how we do this has to be trustworthy. If we have this much confusion amongst ourselves, the community will likely have confusion as well about what happened tonight, and it matters that they trust what happened tonight. I, I thought that I had done my homework. I watched EDC because I knew how much this mattered to the community. And what Counselor Bullock said made, makes sense. And I do not believe that it is reflected in the language that we have in our packet. And I believe that we have to have language that is reflected with what we're saying out loud. I see that on page ninety, it says amend section twenty-twelve with these pieces. I do not see that it says amend section twenty, two hundred forty. And this is why I'm, I, I want this decision to happen. I support what's, the, the, the spirit of what is here. I want us to get done with this. But I do not believe that we, given this conversation, can vote on this in a trustworthy way and given the confusion in the packet, which is why I would support a motion to table this.
All right, I have Counselor Garrett.
Can I say something?
We, we have quite, there's Garrett, uh, Mastro Tataro, Wandelowski, and then I have you down. So I think I'm gonna try to stick to this order. Counselor Garrett?
Okay. I wanna say this as clearly as I can. So, I wrote down what I think the three steps that we should, with these, there's two different amendments. One about multifamily in general, and one about multifamily in the semi-residential. The fiscal order on page eighty-seven is about just the semi-residential zone. The initial proposal that was brought to EDC is on page eighty-eight. So, by my lights, what we should have done is read the order on eighty-seven, then made the amendments on page ninety to the order on eighty-seven, 'cause it is about two hundred dash twelve, 'cause we were not talking about getting rid of the special permit uh, for twenty-four units and below in any other district except for the semi-residential. So that is a very different thing than amending twenty, two hundred dash forty to change it to a strictly a by right process for twenty-four units and below. So step one, reading the order on page eighty-seven. Step two, amending the order on page eighty-seven with the language on page ninety. And then a third step entirely is the language on page ninety-one. And that's about getting rid of the cap on units total. I know that this stuff is confusing, but I'm looking at the text here, and it's all here. And I honestly fail to see a way that this can become clearer, other than reprinting the entire zoning code. We've been working on this, as Counselor Bullock said, for a very long time, and I would love to pass this this evening. Obviously, this is language I proposed. And with the feedback from the community, I think the best thing we can do is, if we have to, just go through those three steps. I think we have consensus as a council on making the amendments on page ninety. I think it, I hope it's clear to everybody, we're talking about just the semi-residential zone for lifting the special permit under twenty-four units. I, my recommendation, my request, would be that we go back to the beginning and just really quickly go through the semi-residential zone amendments eighty-seven and ninety, and then come back and do this stuff on page ninety-one about lifting the cap. And I think that's the cleanest and clearest way we can do this, without having to table it until January. So I, I hear your concerns about transparency, but if we go through that, those three steps, that I believe will be sufficient to making sure the community is, A, clear on what we're voting on, B, we're all clear on what we're voting on, and making sure that we've kind of hit all our legal ducks in a row. It's not a real metaphor, but again, we're all tired. Um, does that make sense?
Uh, yes, but I will continue down to hear what all the other counselors have to say. Counselor Mastro Tataro. Okay, we, Wandelowski, then Mastro, then Minhaas, then Goleb?
Thank you, and I think that's really clear, Counselor Garrett. Um, I think it's all in here. And it was the process of like, do you do the chicken across the river first with the grain? And I think that's what we're getting stuck on. Um, so, I think if we follow your roadmap, it's, all of this language is in the motions. It was just in the wrong order.
Counselor Mastro Tataro?
Yeah, um, and I'm not trying to, before monkey mention to this, I promise, it's, I'm curious to know, uh, 'cause I'm, it's already in, in red, and you guys proposed amendment, but I'm actually, I, I, in the city, I'm reading it. And for multifamily dwelling, why, and this is just a question of curiosity, B, number four, which is all red, and these guys struck everything out and just-
This is the next, this is the third, this is the stuff on ninety-one you're talking about.
I suppose it is.
It is.
But it's part of, it's part of, uh, the second.
Right.
And you guys struck, so let's get it out of the way. You guys struck through, uh, including more than one building may be placed on one lot, but no structure may contain more than twenty-four dwelling units. By right. But what, okay, so you're, you're saying, no, twenty-four, twenty-four units by right, and twenty-five and above is, uh, is gotta be special permit, correct?
That section doesn't have anything to do with by right permitting? It's just about the number of units allowed total. So this, so that, what you're referring to doesn't change anything by right?
More than one building may be, I'm asking you why all this was struck. More than one buil- building may be placed on one lot, but no structure may contain more than twenty-four dwelling units.
Point of order. I think we're just not there yet. I don't know where we are, but we're not there.
It, it, it's all-
We're not there.
Does, just, does Counselor Garrett or, uh, Counselor Bullock wanna answer that question, or I don't know if that came up?
Whether we're there yet or not, it's been struck.
If we could go and just, I would love to go through the process of just starting at the beginning, and I'd be happy to discuss that even first. If we wanna discuss that amendment before the other one, if we just reset this and make sure we're all in shape.
I still have-
I agree with Counselor Gordon.
I still have Minhaas and then Goleb to get through on these comments, and I'm just going to say, it's, we've been round and round and round on this, and this is when it's supposed to happen in subcommittee. And I know that, I, I, I think that most of us comprehend what's being said here, but I'm really, really uncomfortable with, with, that someone would look at our packet online and you couldn't figure this out. But I, I will go with Counselor Minhaas and then Goleb?
Yeah, I'm just gonna echo that because, okay. I feel like I was, I had more clarity before I got to the meeting. And while talking, it just seems like what's written is not what we're talking about, or it's not just, there's not a clear parallel to that. And I know I voted against tabling it, but I, if someone makes a motion to table it, I'd support it now, because I feel like I support this in the spirit of it, but in the spirit of transparency for the public, for someone who's watching this meeting, for somebody who's, who reads the packet, it doesn't, I don't know, it doesn't make sense. And I don't think that's not fair. I don't think it's fair to the public.
Um, I've got Counselor Goleb, then Bullock, then Healy.
There could be a motion to re, if there was a motion to reconsider, and perhaps, I don't know how many motions to reconsider, there would be needed to take us back to square one, one. Yeah. Right, I, I hear Counselor Garrett saying what is written in the packet, and I do not feel ready to vote on something that is not written in the packet, but I would want to vote on what is written in the packet. And I do believe that in order to do so, we would need to go back to square one and reconsider the motions that have happened. And so, I'm one, I've never, I've never made a motion to reconsider, and so I'm wondering if I'm understanding the process correctly, and if so, I would make a motion to reconsider multiple times to take us back to square one, because I do believe we have a basic agreement about what is written in the packet. It's a question, because I've never made one before, so it's a question about process and how I would do that.
So motions for reconsideration on any motion can only be made once. You only get one other bite at the apple, so-
By one person or by the entire council? Like, I can only make that motion once? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay. On a motion, it only gets one motion for reconsideration. Doesn't matter who makes it, and it would be for the entire council to reconsider it.
Okay.
But if, if the will of the council is to not consider this tonight for clarity reasons, and to reconsider the first motion for clarity reasons, if this motion that is on the table now, by the way, it's still an amendment that's on the table, if this motion tonight is tabled to go on to the January agenda, in the rules of procedure, there is a section about reconsiderations being filed after a meeting, that that reconsideration would go on the January agenda to be done at the same time as this one.
Can, can a, can a motion for reconsideration be made in the middle of the council meeting?
Yes, but then it has to be reconsidered that night.
Right, and so if I make a motion to reconsider, we could go back to square one and vote on what is written in the packet?
Yes, but you want to clear up the motion that you're on first-
Okay.
-before you bring another motion back.
And so to do that, the people who made that motion that's on the table would need to withdraw it?
The amendment would need to be withdrawn. And the motion that's on the floor could also be withdrawn to have a reconsideration heard. But if the goal is to have them both heard in January-
No, I feel comfortable, I think there's been things that are not what's written in the packet said. And I feel comfortable voting on what is written in the packet. It says amend section twen- two hundred twelve, right there. I, I agree with what Counsel, if we start in the normal format that we typically do, I do think that that is trustworthy and clear for the community.
There are also, before you do anything, just to let you know, two other people that have their hand up to speak.
Can I make a point of clarification?
What?
That, I don't know if this is necessarily, I presume it's understood, but maybe it's not. But if a motion has the word amend in it, doesn't mean it's an amended motion. It's actually just the emotion, the motion that's amending something that already exists, right?
Yes.
I, it, it gets, it gets really hairy at that point. You think you have a motion, but then there's an amendment, but it's not actually amendment, 'cause the motion itself is to amend something that already exists. That's all.
So just to be clear, in order to reconsider, the people who made the motion to amend would need to withdraw, and the people who made the motion to discuss this motion would need to also withdraw. Correct?
Sorry, I'm just trying to clear the-
Uh, President, can I, can I just ask a question? Was there, was there a, an amendment here, or was it just that the-
Yes.
What was the amendment to the motion? 'Cause I thought the motion itself said amendment. And I, I don't remember somebody amending the motion.
Okay.
Or was it just because that was from the amendment, from the recommendation of committee? Is that where that's coming from?
The motion was made and seconded. Fall veral happened.
Sure.
There was an amendment which was withdrawn. There was amendment that I spoke about, that Counselor Garrett reiterated, that Counselor Minhaas seconded. That amendment is still on the table, on the floor.
We still have people, counselors left to speak, and I just wanna say for clarity, I know what we wanna vote on. But from my perspective, if it went back to committee, even if it took five minutes in committee to say, "We wanna do one, two, three," it's laid out clearly, and it says, "We wanna do one, two, three," because right now we have a confusion about what was originally submitted and what was amended at EDC. So we've got Counselor Bullock and then Counselor Healy.
Um, can you let Counselor Healy go before me?
Sure. Counselor Healy?
Yeah, so I have a way out of this, but, um, we are gonna have to reconsider the last motion, and then I think we should sit down collectively and go through this. and then I think we should sit down collectively and go through this. I just dove into the code a little bit, and I think there's some confusion here, and we should just take the time to go through it the right way. So I would support a motion to reconsider, and I would also support a motion to table this until the next meeting.
I would, I would make a motion to table this. And if I am still Chair of EDC in January, I will make sure you all have printouts of the code with them, with the appropriate motions on top of each one before we get to council in January.
We need a second on that?
Just to be clear, we're motioning to table...
Table.
Which, which one, remind us...
All of the zoning. Let's just table both zoning motions.
Second.
Point of order, we, we can't table something that was already voted on without a reconsideration.
So is the motion to table, to table 024.1?
Yes.
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 And seconded.
Point of order, don't we need to withdraw the amendment first?
Nope.
No? Okay.
So we'll do a roll call vote on that?
To table, order number... Whatever it is. Twenty-five...
Two...
Zero... Two-four dash one. Counselor Goleb.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor Mastachiaro. Counselor Bullock.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
No.
Counselor Wandelowski.
Yes.
Counselor Healy.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
No.
Counselor Minhaas.
Yes.
Counselor Toronzo.
Yep.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes to table 024.1 by majority.
Counselor Goleb.
Going to move that we reconsider. Fiscal year twenty-five zero-two-four.
Second.
Point of order, I don't want to be a pain in the ass. I really don't. Don't motions for reconsiderations come at the item sixteen? Or can we do them now? If we can do them now, please do it now and get it over with. I would love that, but I didn't know if we were... Yeah. Oh, sweet. Okay. Forget what I just said.
Motion... Dag. On the motion to reconsider, order number twenty-five zero-two-four. Counselor Goleb.
Did, just point of order, did we need a second of that motion?
You did get a second. Counselor Healy seconded it.
Okay, then yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor Mastachiaro.
Sure.
Counselor Bullock.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
No.
Counselor Wandelowski.
Yes.
Counselor Healy.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Minhaas.
Yes.
Counselor Toronzo.
Yep.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes. The motion twenty-five zero-two-four is once again on the floor.
So that reconsideration vote happens now?
Yes.
So, we already reconsider, can I move to table that as well, if we're gonna table the other one?
No, it has to be voted tonight.
So, just so I'm clear, we tabled the one about lifting the cap on number of units. And then now we're back, and we have to vote on the one on eighty-seven. So my suggestion is that we vote on this, we, I'm sorry, we amend it as it's written on page ninety, and then we go back and we vote on the amended order and just be done with this one. Because, and is there, and could, and at that point, honestly, like, why don't we, well, ticking the other one off the table would be just as easy as anything else, but...
Point of clarification, if we brought something back up, why can't we table it now? We've taken it, we've, we've reneged on our vote, which would bring it back to the table to begin with.
So a motion for reconsider...
The floor, rather.
A motion for reconsideration is different than a motion to table.
Originally.
Right. Um, a motion for reconsideration is...
Isn't reconsideration tabling?
No.
That's not an option?
No. It's not an option.
Huh. Well, that seems moot to even have it.
So if the motion to reconsider had been submitted to the office after this meeting, but before Friday at noon, it would have gone on the next council agenda.
It's almost like we tabled it.
So it would have been like you tabled it?
Right. Right.
Counselor Gordon.
Okay. I feel like I understand this actually a lot better than I did however long ago we started talking about it. I think that we can actually do this right now and do it well and do it right, according to the roadmap that Counselor Garrett laid out. We can, so now we're, we're considering FY twenty-five dash zero-two-four, right? That has been brought back. We have to vote on it tonight. I move that we amend that motion according to the language on page ninety. Um, to amend subsection B, number thirteen, adding the words multifamily dwelling in accordance with two-hundred dash forty, twenty-four units and under. And in addition, adding to subsection C nine, the phrase after two-hundred dash forty, twenty-five units and above.
Second.
So now we're on discussion on this?
On the amendment.
The amendment. And Counselor Goleb?
I'll just say, this is, we, we're back at square one now, and this is what we all thought we, I bel, this is what I thought that we were voting on. And I believe that this is what we all thought that we were voting on a long time ago.
Counselor Gordon.
Yeah, I'll just say, I, it wasn't entirely clear, I think, before. I had it, I was confused about which amendment went with what. I think Counselor Toronzo was exactly right. The part of the issue here is that we're, we have amendments on amendments on amendments, and the language just gets very confusing, and thus the way it appeared in the packet at first was, to me, confusing. But I actually feel really clear now, and it, it makes total sense to me that this amendment goes with the motion that we're now reconsidering, and that this amendment makes a lot of sense because of the compromise that was offered and, you know, discussed at EDC multiple times. And I, I fully support this. I hope we can vote yes on the amendment and vote yes on the motion.
Which is basically saying twenty-four and under by right. And semi-residential.
Do we have any more comments on that? Does, Counselor Bullock, do you want to speak on that?
Yeah, I just want to say that section two-hundred dash twelve is specific to semi-residential, so we, that is all that that section of the code is about. And I will support writing that into the code, the amendment, although... I'm reading the code, and I, I don't understand how it'll fit, like, what, what, yeah. So I will support the, I will support the amendment for the sake of getting through this meeting. Yeah.
Counselor Toronzo.
I also agree, my, I will say, for clarity, my, my comments are not uh, to be obstructive in any way or combative. They are, for this exact reason, is to, for clarity on what we are voting on. And it, and when these things, and I know that, that zoning is very difficult, but words matter. We've seen words matter in all aspects of our life. And, and simple words such as must, or shall, or may, can change something completely. And that's why when we're voting on something that is going to be a substantive change to what is happening there, and especially with things that have been talked about, and they're, and, and I, I agree, that was a bit offensive, what I was trying to throw in there as a slight. There has been a lot of homework done, and I appreciate that. So that's just me being petulant, and, and I apologize for that. But this is why those types of words matter, in, especially in writing codes. And, and this goes beyond the ridiculousness of the whereas's and the what-nots and, and whatever other old English language that we still use in our, our, our codes. But we want to make sure that it's clear, because we, we get a lot of public input, and there has been a lot of pushback on this, and the fact that there's not a lot of people right now pushing back on it does speak volumes to the work that has been done. And I will give the credit where credit is due, that there has been work done on this to make compromises, to assuage some of the apprehensions of the community on some of these things with a lot of people who don't like change. I'm only saying this, and the, the, the words that I've said earlier are to make sure that we are actually doing this in the right way, so that we, we don't get blowback a month or two down the road after we've already done this, and like, you've done all the work, and we've got this through, and then you don't want to sit there and get a whole rash of crap later in regards to it. So that, that was it. But, uh, but if we can, if we can make this happen with the, the amendments to the proposals, to the things that are already on the paper tonight, even if they aren't as, as clear, as long as we're all clear on what's happening, and, and that's gonna be, once we vote on it, that is, what is written after that point will withstand pushback, then I have, I have no qualms with that.
Um, I still have Counselor Healy.
All right. I really want to go to bed, but I'm gonna clarify what we're doing here. So section two-hundred point forty deals with what's required for special permit of a multifamily dwelling. That whole section is what you need to do to get a special permit for a multifamily dwelling. So I really think the way this needs to be changed is, instead of striking out all nine, say multifamily dwellings over twenty, twenty-five and over in accordance with section two-hundred point four-zero. And what that does is, if you look at the zoning order, section two-hundred point four-zero spells out what's required, special permit required, the zoning board of appeals may grant a special permit for multifamily dwellings under the following procedures and requirements, and it spells out all those requirements.
Point of order.
That's...
The, um, the amendment that Counselor Gordon proposed does just that, except in a slightly different order. So it's...
Yeah, but do you really want to lump in the twenty-four and under? It should just say twenty-four and under by right or something.
I think we should just go with the amendment as it is.
Okay.
Just as an alternative, if we voted this, just like we did the first time, it would, it would lengthen the process. It would have to go, because we've reconsidered, would have reconsidered it. We could vote to amend that again, but I believe it would have to go through planning board again. It's just really hard. I'm hearing two different ways to go about this with a split committee from EDC. Counselor Gordon?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to reiterate, the amendment that I made is, is the amendment that came directly from EDC that was approved three-zero with, I believe, one abstention. And I think that is perfectly useful language that does what we need it to do for the sake of the motion.
Uh, Counselor Bullock?
Yeah, section, section two-hundred dash twelve is specific to semi-residential, so what we did the first time, striking out multifamily, and then going to two-hundred forty and clarifying what needs a special permit and what doesn't, and that's where we got chopped up. That's one way to go about it, and that's fine. If we want to add to section two-hundred dash twelve a line that clarifies the under twenty-four and above the amendment that Counselor Gordon made, that's fine. We can add that language to two-hundred dash twelve if this council feels like it's necessary to add special permit language and, and, and unit count in two-hundred dash twelve. It's just, it's different than the code is written, and it's different than how I understood what we did in EDC, but that is... That, it's just another way to do it with some different words and that, or the same words, but on a different section, and that is fine.
So are we maybe, are we maybe taking one vote for both issues now? Is that what we're gonna be doing, or is it still gonna be two separate votes?
No, we will still need to bring back two-hundred dash forty and amend the section that is specific to multifamily dwellings, number of units and special permits. We will need to add this to section two-hundred dash forty as well. That is where I actually think this amendment...
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt, but I have a very, very early plane to catch tomorrow. I am leaving.
Yeah, it's getting difficult. I just feel like there's a lot of pressure to, to do this, which is what I don't like. I don't like feeling like we're under the gun, that we have to do this because we did a reconsideration vote. So we can do it. I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm in support of what we're trying to do. I'm not liking how we're doing it, and I still don't think it's... So if anyone has a suggestion how to get out of this mess, Counselor Toronzo?
Point of information, though, don't we actually have to do this by January fourth? Which, I'm sorry, that's just dawning on me now, but I believe that, I believe January fourth is the date. If we don't complete this by, it has to start all over again anyways.
We don't have confirmation of the dates here.
So I don't have the folders with me?
December, January, or the nineties? We, that'd be February.
So I don't have the folders with me. I can't confirm the January date that Counselor Bullock said. I believe it could be voted at the January council meeting on January fifteenth, but I am not positive. I don't have it with me, so I can't say.
You know, we're still here. We're all here. The committee did the work. We know what we're voting on, so why prolong the agony?
I agree. I just, I'm hearing two different ways of going about it. So I guess we can hash it out and determine which is the best way.
I guess I'm just a little confused about what the two ways, like, I'm only hearing one way at this point. Like, I've proposed the amendment. I think the amendment's pretty clear. We could vote on the amendment. Right.
Counselor Toronzo?
I just, what was the amendment? Aren't these just what we're voting on anyway? I mean, I know it says zoning amendment. But what are, what are we amending from the first one that we're recon, but what are we reconsidering from the first vote we just, we, we motioned to reconsider, right?
You made a motion to reconsider.
Of two-hundred dash twelve. Of two hundred dash twelve.
Yes.
Right.
Counselor Gordon made an amendment that was seconded by Counselor Garrett.
To add the other pages that were seemingly misaligned with what we were thinking they were? Okay. All right, got it.
If I may, I think another problem here is that these sections reference each other. So when we say like two hu, two hundred dash twelve, two hundred dash forty, like that's actually a really confusing way to refer to them because both of them talk about the other ones, or at least in one of those directions. The, the amendment that I made is a proposal to amend two hundred dash, to, to amend order number FY twenty-five dash zero-two-four. I want to use the motion, the order number, rather than the zoning section number, because I think that's also getting us confused.
Counselor Garrett.
How about we vote on the amendment?
Which is on page ninety, correct?
On page ninety.
Are you calling the?
I would like to call the question on the amendments.
So we need a roll call vote to call the question.
All right. I'm calling the question for order number zero twenty-four. Counselor Gollub.
Maybe the first time I've ever said yes, but yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor Bullock.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
No.
Counselor Wandelowski.
Yes.
Counselor Healy.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Minhas.
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo.
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion passes. The question has been called. On the amendment for order number zero twenty-four.
Would anyone be offended? Oh, sorry.
On the amendment for zero twenty-four as proposed by Counselor Gordon. Counselor Gollub.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor Bullock.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Wandelowski.
Yes.
Counselor Healy.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Minhas.
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo.
Yeah.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
Order number twenty-four has been amended and is still on the floor.
Can I call the question for the original motion?
We will have to vote that.
Great, let's do it.
Okay. Call the question. Twenty-four as amended. Calling the question. Counselor Gollub.
No.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor Bullock.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
No.
Counselor Wandelowski.
Yes.
Counselor Healy.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Minhas.
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo.
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion has been called. Order number twenty-four as amended is now going to be voted on. Roll call vote. Counselor Gollub.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor Bullock.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Wandelowski.
Yes.
Counselor Healy.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
A thousand percent yes.
Counselor Minhas.
Yep.
Counselor Toranzo.
Yep, you do it.
Counselor Bottomley, President Bottomley.
Yes.
Would you like to vote?
Yes.
O twenty-four as amended has passed. Now, are you guys taking the other one from the table, and are you doing it? Or is it going into January?
Yeah, just you know, a lesson learned for all of us, because Counselor Gollub and I have talked about this in the past, the committee, we have to have the ducks are low and they bring the stuff to the full council, so there's no misinterpretation, there's no, you know, oh, I thought you meant this, you know, it's just an example of the, the agenda came out last week and no one questioned it then. It was only tonight when people started saying, what, what, what's going on? So we need to be a little bit more with it when we get to this point in the process, you know, that's all.
So, we have to decide, we have tabled the other one, whether we're going to bring it back and do it tonight and finish it, or since we've gone this far, I'm just saying. We've kind of taken the plunge. Counselor Gollub.
I'm sorry. I move to take order number fiscal year twenty-five zero-two-four point one from the table.
I second that.
So that is off the table, and oh, voted, sorry, and that's a roll call.
Okay. To take order number zero twenty-four point one. Zero twenty-four point one. Off the table. Counselor Gollub.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor Bullock.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Wandelowski.
Yes.
Counselor Healy.
Yes, please.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
Yes, and thank you for your patience.
Counselor Minhas.
Yep.
Counselor Toranzo. Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
O twenty-four point one is now on the floor.
Counselor Garrett, do you want to take this away?
Would love to. So, this is the most important of all the zoning amendments that were proposed. It takes away the hard cap on units in buildings, which currently in our zoning ordinance is twenty-four total. So no special permit, no major development review, no act of God would allow you to build more than twenty-four units in a building in the city under the current zoning rules. That's a huge problem because economies of scale and, you know, dictate that the more units in a building, the more likely it is to be able to be constructed profitably. So this is by far the highest priority I have as far as these zoning amendments, because it will make the biggest difference for housing. We have a huge gap in units in the city. The housing study that came out recently said we need to build eight hundred in the decade in order to stabilize the increase in prices. It won't lower rents, it won't, you know, so that's just to keep things from getting worse. There's a housing crisis in the whole country. We need to build as much as we can to try to mitigate it, and not basically become, frankly, North Hampton, or East Hampton, or Boston, or Cambridge, or any other desirable community that has more demand for the housing units than they do supply. There's a lot of reasons for this. The, I also think there's some interesting choices that could be made with the type of housing built. You know, so if you have very small units, you have a building that's the same size as another building that might have had twenty-four units, and you put thirty-six, but they're shared bathrooms or a boarding, you know. So there's a lot of different things this unlocks, and in addition, the language on page ninety-one, if you look at the strike through, there's also currently a forty-foot spacing requirement that I haven't really mentioned, and there's also a requirement for stairwells. The spacing is wider than the zoning ordinance requires in, say, the central commercial or the urban residential, and what it basically does is increases sprawl. So, you know, just to make a small joke, we are sprawl busting by by basically passing the zoning ordinance, if we, if we strike the section in its entirety. One of the arguments that I made at EDC about this, and why it's not just free rein zoning or open zoning, is there's all sorts of parameters that dictate the size of the building in addition to the language that's here. So right now, you know, zoning setbacks would stay in place, the frontage requirements would stay in place for all the different residential zones, the height restrictions that apply throughout the city would stay in place. So very similar to the ADUs, where you wouldn't be able to build an ADU on a lot that's too small for it, this would prevent wrong sizing of buildings in other zones just because it doesn't abolish the other elements of the zoning code. So this is a hugely important thing to do. It's also, it's going to make a substantial difference in the number of buildings where residential units were able to build, especially in the central commercial and the semi-residential zone. I'm happy to answer any questions about it, but again, it is not just an unlimited number of units because we have other parts of our zoning code that are addressing these issues. In the future, I also would be open to what we did with the semi-residential zone and that model, where we, again, right-size the kind of construction we're allowing in different zones, but that's neither here nor there. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but I hope that made sense.
Open this up for discussion, more discussion? Do we have any, oh, Counselor Gordon?
I don't want to interrupt, whatever, if that was an important question.
I just didn't know if there was any proposed amendment to this. Okay, Counselor Gordon?
Yeah, I, um, I really appreciate this proposal. I think it makes total sense. I think that there has been some confusion about it in the community because people have not understood that all of the other rules and, and processes and parameters would stay in place, that would keep this from becoming some, like, outlandish, you know, development opportunity for someone. But the thing that's also really convinced me is that in, in listening to, you know, planning staff here in Greenfield at FERCOG and the planning board, you know, all of the experts that have talked about this, twenty-four is an arbitrary number, fifty is an arbitrary number, like, there's no reason that the numbers were set where they were, and so we act, like, removing those arbitrary, unuseful, and, and actually harmful caps will just allow us more flexibility to hopefully be able to get some more housing development in the community, and I think that that's just only a good thing.
Any more comments? So we are ready to vote on this?
So the motion is proposed. Twenty-five, twenty-four point one is being voted as initially written with no amendments.
Uh, roll call vote?
Counselor Gollub.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor Bullock.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
No.
Counselor Wandelowski.
Yes.
Counselor Healy.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Minhas.
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo.
Yabba dabba doo.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion passes.
Um, we move on. There's no presentation of petitions and similar papers, uh, any reports from committee. No unfinished business, no old business, new business. We have first readings on page ninety-two.
All right, we're going to transfer two million six hundred thousand dollars from free cash to capital stabilization fund. Transfer two hundred thousand from free cash to compensated absences fund. Transfer one hundred thousand from free cash to contract stabilization fund.
Excellent. What's that? Counselor Wandelowski.
By proclamation, we want to recognize our fellow counselor who has a new baby.
Oh, by proclamation? Hear ye, hear ye.
It's not an ordinance or a resolution, so it doesn't need to go to a committee.
And the contents are less than the cap. Just so you know.
Followed all ethics.
Did not break any laws, thank you.
Congratulations. We have no motions for reconsideration, I hope. So I will take a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
So moved. And we need to do a roll call.
Counselor Gollub.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor Bullock.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Wandelowski.
Yes.
Counselor Healy.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Minhas.
Yes, please.
Counselor Toranzo.
Yep.
And does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The meeting is adjourned at ten, ten, ten eleven PM, sorry.